A few people here, so we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is the committee of the whole meeting on Monday, March 15th. Clerk is here, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Sacks?
Here.
Ms. Hershey? Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Colebrook?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
All right, thank you. First on the agenda, we have approval of minutes, but we don't have any on this agenda. So next up is additions to the agenda. I'm not seeing anything there. Do we have anything to add prior to the meeting, Carol? Okay, then we're going to go ahead and jump into public input and presentations. Just for any members of the public who might be attending right now, we're going to have about an hour-long training session for new council members and our council candidates and current council members. And we'll be going to the regular business of the agenda come seven o'clock. I don't have anything else, so Carol, go ahead and take it away.
Thank you. For those of you who don't know me, my name's Carol Mitten, and I'm the city administrator. And I really appreciate you all taking some extra time to make room for some training sessions tonight. It's the first of many that we will be doing. And as I think I had mentioned at a prior meeting, but maybe y'all didn't, weren't in attendance, what we plan to do to begin with is to do a high-level introduction to each of the departments. And we all have some same basic questions that we want to answer for you. And then as we get questions from you, and we've already gotten a few from sitting council members about some things that they want us to do deep dives into, but we know some of those topics are kind of complicated. So we'll do dedicated sessions to that, but we wanted to give you a sort of just a grounding in what each of the departments do as a way of introduction. So I'm going to take about 30 minutes, and hopefully I'll leave enough room for any questions that you all have. We will post these slides, but when you're finishing them at the last minute, they don't get posted in advance. So I'm going to ask Jason to put my slides up. And then after I go tonight, Lori will do 30 minutes on community development. Thanks, Jason, you can go to the next slide. So each of the presentations, you'll have a, it'll begin with an organizational chart. And I'll go into this in a little bit more detail, but this is something you'll want to review on your own. It's too much to try to digest right now. But what I want to say is that we have, in the executive department, we have 15 full-time or close-to-full-time employees. We have five part-time employees, including the mayor, who's part-time, and two full-time vacancies, and one contractor, who right now, that contractor is the city attorney. So next slide. So let me tell you a little bit about what we do. And even at a high level, this is kind of a busy slide, because we have, there's a lot of moving parts in the executive department, and we've taken in some new roles, just since Mayor Marlin has been in office, and we probably will take more on as time goes by. So we have the mayor at the top of the org chart under the citizens of Urbana, and she's the ultimate authority over staff. So as you know, or as some of you may know, prior to me being hired, the position of city administrator had been vacant for more than a decade. And so it's really been a process of the mayor and I sort of sorting out our different roles. And you know, these roles can be what the individuals want them to be. But the way that Mayor Marlin and I have chosen to divide the responsibilities in the executive in general is that she handles the policy and political side of things, and I handle the operational side of things. And you'll see how that plays out as we go through the slides and as we go through our, you know, just meetings together. The comprehensive plan rewrite is being managed out of the executive department because of its importance to the city. There's a reason why the title for Andrea Rudy is Senior Advisor for Integrated Strategy Development. The word integrated is included because we intend the scope of the plan to be as unified as much as possible. So that would be not only across departments and across sectors, but across policy objectives. We want it all to be contained in a single document. And the word strategy is included in her title, because a plan that is comprehensive, but includes everything but isn't actionable, is not, it might be easy to get approved, because everybody can see what they want in it, but it's not easy to implement. And we want a plan that can be implemented. So I've included on this slide sort of the highlights of what the legal department does. So you know, we handle legal matters in general, including FOIA, litigation, and risk mitigation. You know, but they also represent the city in ordinance violation court. You know, they support us when we try to buy or sell property, they handle collection matters. And you know, there's any number of issues that come up in the given day or week that we have to end up referring to the legal department. And then we have the Office of Human Rights and Equity, which until recently was in the Human Relations Department. And then when we reorganized and put Human Relations and Finance together, then we put the Office of Human Rights and Equity into the executive department. And again, that's because of the, we wanted to sort of amplify the role of that office and give them a little bit more visibility across the organization. And they, in general, they staffed the Human Relations Commission and the Civilian Police Review Board. And in doing that, their goal is to promote equity, and CPRB in particular, to improve relationships with the police. IT does a whole variety of tasks for us, anything technology-related. And sometimes we try to suck them into things that they prefer not to be included in, because there are customized systems that certain departments use, but they support us, they support you, they support these meetings. Jason is the station manager, Jason Liggett, as he introduced himself. And there's a lot of Zoom management going on these days, and that falls to Jason and his team of part-time camera operators. So that's a big task. And then finally, we have a communications specialist in Exec who promotes city activities, issues press releases, develops tools that different departments can use, promotes special events and special efforts. Bridgette Broihand, who's our communications specialist, she was really, really involved, as were other people, in the census and in disseminating information about COVID. Next slide. So how will you interact with us? How will you most typically see us? So the mayor is, and council members are all elected officials. So the mayor is your colleague in the sense that you're all elected officials. And the roles and responsibilities are laid out in city code and in council rules. And there will be a special session, I think it will be held by the clerk, where you will get to know these council rules in more detail. Dave Westner, who is our city attorney, and I attend all city council and committee of the whole meetings and are available to answer questions in real time. And to the extent that we don't have the answers in real time, we provide follow-up. In order to manage tasks and priorities, I ask that all questions to staff, including legal, are routed through me unless they're specific to an agenda item. So if we have, if there's something that you are interested in knowing about, but it's not for immediate decision-making, it needs to be sort of prioritized with all the other work. And so routing it through me is the easiest way. The COM Plan and Office of Human Rights and Equity staff will make presentations in front of you from time to time. We've had numerous comprehensive plan updates so far. You'll receive press releases and other general communications from Bridgette, the COM specialist. I expect that you will, in the short term, be seeing more amendments to the CPRB ordinance. They are working with a group of interested members of the public on devising some changes. And then the Human Rights Ordinance is also something that seems to be in a bit of flux. So I would think you would be seeing some amendments to those ordinances sooner as opposed to later. And then something else that has been on hold because of COVID, but needs to be overhauled, as well as the Special Events Ordinance, and you can expect to see that coming out of Exec also. So the boards and commissions that are staffed by the executive at the moment, there are four, and soon there will be three. So the first one is the ARMS Policy Board. And the ARMS Policy Board is the area-wide records management system, and it handles police records. And the reason why it is that it is handled by Urbana is because the original programming that was done, was done by Urbana staff, and it was for the city of Urbana. And then when some of the surrounding jurisdictions decided to collaborate, and the ARMS program itself was developed, we sort of retained the responsibility to manage the program. And the jurisdictions have been supporting us with funding. And now that it's time to basically refresh that program into something more modern, and it's now going to be called a Public Safety Records Management System. ARMS itself, as managed by the city of Urbana, will be phasing out while the Public Safety Records Management System is phasing in, and that will be managed by MetCAD. So over time, in the relatively near future, next year or two, I think, ARMS will be phased out. So that policy board will go away. And as I had mentioned, the Civilian Police Review Board and Human Relations Commission are staffed out of the Exec. And then the Urbana Public Television Commission, which advises UPTV on the operation of the public access channel, is also staffed out of Exec. So how do we interact with other departments? So first and foremost, the vision for all employees and the activities that we conduct comes from the mayor. But we do some other things that are, some of them are sort of unique to me, but we try to instill a, you know, a sense of this in everyone. And so in terms of managing expectations, both internal and external, I assist, the mayor assists, our office assists with resource management, balancing demands and setting priorities, because there's always these competing demands on our time, and people need to have a set of, you know, a direction. There's never enough time to do everything. So we want to do that by providing consistent direction and articulating our values and adhering to them. Another thing that we do that I think has changed in Mayor Marlin's administration, and I'm happy to help further the effort, is to champion collaboration across departments. We encourage collaboration across departments, and we facilitate collaboration across departments. So this idea of siloing in departments or in divisions is not what we want. There's any number of meetings that happen internally and externally, where different representatives of different departments are working together to, you know, to move projects forward. So one that we have typically on a Monday afternoon, so it's at top of mind for me right now, is the Development Review Team. So as we get requests from people or inquiries from people about maybe a new project or what they might be able to do with a certain piece of property, or, you know, a zoning case that's coming forward, this group meets and offers commentary from, you know, the police department, the fire department, public work, various parts of public works, the planners, the building side of things. So everybody's collaborating and offering commentary. So as things move forward through an approval process, or things move towards getting in front of council, they will have been as fully vetted internally as we can get them, so that there are no surprises. And then, of course, IT, legal, comms, they provide support services for other departments. And then I'm going to speak again to the comprehensive plan a little bit more on the next page. And we also promote equity and diversity throughout the organization. So that's how we support, how we interact with the other departments. So for those of you who have been, who are on the council, you'll recognize this is the branding for the comprehensive plan. And the development of the comprehensive plan is going to be our focus for the next few years. And then the achievement of the goals of the comprehensive plan will be the city's focus for the next few decades. We're trying to plan for 20 years out, and it should be our overarching focus. And there should not be a competing list of priorities. So each, as we do each of these departmental presentations, each department will tell you why the comprehensive plan is important to them. And then we will keep coming back to that, because we want you to keep coming back to the comprehensive plan as sort of the place where we are capturing and communicating what the priorities of the city and the residents of Urbana, what they expect and what they would like going forward. So resources are limited everywhere. And the last four years in particular, I think, have brought into focus for this council the resource constraints in the city of Urbana as we worked through the structural budget deficit. So the outgoing council, I would say, has become pretty familiar with the capacity constraints of our staffing levels. The challenge for the incoming council is, will be to understand our baseline level of services and the funding levels needed to maintain the baseline and to make allocations from that starting point. And everything we do, everything we do, and we hope everything you do, will be contextualized in light of the entire budget. A lot of times, people come and they say, you know what, you should do X. And X, whatever that might be, might be a perfectly desirable, defensible thing that we should do. But it has to be, can we afford to do it, or are you willing to trade that off against something else? So the comprehensive plan is going to allow us to help set those priorities and say, this is something that we value more than something else, because we can't do it all. We're also really excited about the tools, the communication and engagement tools that the comprehensive plan team is developing. They're trying some new things that are not typically used by government. In fact, some of them are being provided gratis to the city, because people who work normally with business want to see if a government can use these tools. So we're hoping that if those engagement tools are successful, that we'll be able to use them in other efforts also. And the integrated nature of the comprehensive plan reinforces the matrix structure or this collaborative structure that we use to do our work. And that's why each presentation that you see will make reference to the comprehensive plan. So the last thing is, and I'm not going into any kind of numbers here. Well, maybe there is one little number on there, but the idea is, I just want you to know in chunks how the executive department is funded. Different departments will have different answers for this. So the biggest chunk by far is, most of our salaries are paid out of the general fund. And for those of you who don't know what the general fund is yet, you will become very familiar with it. I think of it as just our regular checking account, where, you know, the revenue goes in, or like your paycheck goes in and your mortgage payment goes out. There's nothing special about it. It's not set aside for anything in particular, although, you know, the budget decides where everything goes. But it's just basically where most of the money comes in and most of the money goes out. Now, generally speaking, on the IT side, the IT salaries are paid through inter-fund transfers from various departments. So some departments are funded, not unlike Exec, out of the general fund, but some are funded by discrete funds. And so like stormwater is one. So in order to appropriately allocate the IT costs across all of the funds that they support, we do these inter-fund transfers. And it's just basically, IT, I'm going to use, this is not exactly how it happens, but, you know, bills a given fund for the amount of IT that they receive. That's a shorthand way of saying it. We also get a bit of money in Exec from our cable franchise agreements, and this is intended to be used for capital equipment, related, capital and equipment related to the operation of the PEG channels. And PEG stands for Public Educational and Government Access Channels. It's a modest amount of money, but it's a source. And then, as I mentioned, ARMS is funded out of these transfers from local jurisdictions in support of the area-wide records management system. So that's the overview of Exec, and I would be happy to take any questions that you have.
Hey, Carol?
Yes.
Can I make one correction?
Yes, please.
The mayor is a full-time position, and it's listed that way in the budget and has been for many, many years. The salary, the salary is low enough that it may look like a half-time or part-time position, but it is a full-time position.
That's my mistake. We won't talk about whether you're underpaid or not, but any questions from anyone?
Folks just want to raise their hands. I can call on you? Not seeing anybody, Carol, so.
Okay, well, I thought Colin had a hand up.
Colin has a hand up. Oh, I'm sorry, Colin.
No worries. So I'm curious, I don't know if this was included in some of what you were talking about afterward, but in the diagram of the structure of the city executive, there's this, the line that goes off to the side that says "other departments." I'm curious if you could speak to what some of those departments are.
Those are, well, you'll see all of them. So that would be police, that would be fire, community development, public works. Who am I missing?
HR, finance.
HR, oh my goodness, how could I miss HR, finance? Yeah, those are the, those are the five. Does that answer your question, Colin?
Carol, I just wanted a little bit of clarification. You had said that all questions from city council go through you. And it's been my experience that that is not always the case. So for example, if I get a complaint from a resident that's saying, you know, the garbage is overflowing at address X, I'll reach out to Jason, who is the person who kind of goes around and checks that out. Or if there's a question in terms of, you know, something that a different department is presenting on at city council, I'll reach out to the person, sometimes I reach out to Lori. Sometimes I'll reach out to Elizabeth about an HR budget item. So I just wanted, for the people who are new, to let you know that some of those very specific questions, in my opinion, it's fine to reach out to the people who directly can answer those. But I don't know if you want to address that, Carol?
Well, yeah, I mean, those are good examples of times when, like, Jason is available to everyone if you, for, you know, if you have, if you want to report something that looks like a nuisance or needs to be reported. Or I'm trying to think, well, you know, Amy Anderson, for instance, she's our animal control officer. If you had something involving an animal that would best be addressed by her. Just like, just like anybody could reach out to them. I think it's when there's larger questions, not sort of laser questions about something that is in front of the council, but when you have like, I was wondering about this, or I'd like to know more about, you know, this program or whatever. If that, if those could be routed through me, because that needs to be racked and stacked against, you know, other work that folks have.
Grace?
Thank you. I was just wondering if you had a few minutes to elaborate or give some examples on how you mentioned that the executive works on, working towards the values and internal compass and equity and inclusion in the city?
I can give you some, probably the easiest thing for me to do right now is to give you some easier examples. So one of the things that I've worked really hard on is, when I came in, especially with public works, because I got to do a deep dive at public works, there were a lot of, I'll call them handshake agreements. And those could be with other jurisdictions, or those could be with even individual property owners sometimes. And we've been working really hard, because I want people to only do what they have the authority to do. So if we need authority from the council to do something, or, for instance, you know, we've done some things with some of the local other agencies, I'll just say that. And instead of having an intergovernmental agreement, we'll just have this informal agreement. And that, to me, is, we don't have the authority to do those things without going to council first and getting permission through an approved intergovernmental agreement. So that's one value. Another value very much is fairness. And, you know, one of the things that happens in local government, or can happen in local government, is there's this idea of the squeaky wheel. And that certain people get preferential treatment, because they'll call the mayor's office, or because they'll call me, or they'll call someone that they have on the inside. And we very much discourage disparate treatment of anyone, either disparate, you know, enforcement or disparate benefit to people, because they're the squeaky wheel, or because they've attempted to, you know, sort of make contact at a high level. We want everybody to be treated the same. So hopefully, those are a few examples that are responsive.
Did you have any follow-up, Grace, or?
No, I think that's all for now, thank you.
Okay. So you're hand up next? Yeah, if you can, if you hear me.
Sorry about that, I wasn't sure if you said my name, I'm in the car. I just have a quick follow-up question. Carol, you were talking about kind of the process of things going from your office to city council. Could you talk a little bit more about the timeframe, so that council members would have a sense of how much time they're getting notice about those decisions that might be coming up? Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. I think that varies, it can vary. So sometimes, the first time council members will see something is on a council agenda. If it's something simple and straightforward that's coming out of CD, like a, something relatively minor, it might not even go to the committee first, it might just go directly to council. The council has been very vocal about making sure that anything that is, has any kind of, any level of complexity about it, that it go to the committee first, so that, you know, you have a chance to talk about it. People have ample notice, they get a couple of opportunities to come and give their comments about it. But that's usually, unless there's something at Plan Commission, council members might, if they're following along what's coming at Plan Commission, they would get earlier notice. We don't make a special effort other than sending the notices. I think the notices get sent, Plan Commission notices get sent to council. But if you're not, yes, Lori's nodding, thank you. But if you're not, if you're not opening those up and reviewing the agenda and looking at, well, what's that case all about, then you're not getting that, we're not, you know, we're not really serving that up in any other way. We've had some things, though, you know, I mean, I think, I think there's a pretty good dynamic where the council's comfortable keeping something in committee or sending something back to committee if they feel like it needs more work. I would say, we're not always successful, but we try not to, not to force things that, you know, like, oh, we have to have this voted on this week because of a deadline. We don't, we're not always able to accomplish that, but I think we try to avoid doing that if we can. So, but, you know, there is an advantage here, you know, where I, where I used to work, the council or the board, it was a county board, met once a month. And here, you know, we're meeting basically every week, and so that helps a lot.
Dan?
Thank you. I would follow up on that. If you were talking about a new policy or a program, one thing I discovered when I became mayor, and I didn't really appreciate it as a city council member, was how much work goes on behind the scenes. And sometimes it's months and months of work before it sees the light of day. And sometimes people get impatient, because they're not seeing results. But it just means, it does take a long time. A good example is when we rewrote the liquor code. That's a major change in policy, and that was a good nine months, from nine to 10 months, from start to finish. And the same thing with some of the other changes that are underway now. It just takes a long time to sometimes bring things to fruition. It just takes a long time to sometimes bring things to fruition. It doesn't mean that work isn't being done. It just isn't being done in public. Because it's just not, it's just, you know, it's in the oven. And so people, people need to appreciate that, that it does take time.
Well, and, and just having the mayor, um, say those few things reminded me of, of two other things. One is for something like the liquor code rewrite, I mean, there was a public meeting and, um, engaging very early on with the affected, um, business owners. So there was, you know, there, there was engagement and, um, the council, uh, you know, was aware of that engagement and, um, may have attended, I can't remember. But so, you know, for something that takes a long time, there's touch points as we go along. But we also use something, um, that's, that's allowed under the, um, Open Meetings Act, where we call them for shorthand two-by-twos, where we'll meet, you can meet with one or two council members at a time. And we can do, you know, the kind of more in-depth briefing that, that, that is really not conducive to a, um, to a council meeting or committee meeting so that you can ask every question. And really sort through that. And then we can get more prepared for the public meeting. Because, you know, the council members will have had a chance to, to really probe something and, and give us some feedback in, in order to help us get, um, get prepared, um, for the, for the public part of the meeting.
All right, Dennis?
Yeah, I had a question. Maybe you could, uh, talk a little bit about the, the role of different commissions and whether there is autonomy in the commission or how they relate to the authority of the mayor.
Wow, okay. Um, you know what I'm gonna do? I'm going to put that down for a good deep dive. Topic. Cause I don't think I can cover that sufficiently, uh, right now, but that's a, that, I think that's good. And, and I don't think there's a single answer either. So it's, um, but I'll, I'll write that down. So, um, we're, we're sort of at, at our halfway point. Jared, if, if you wanted to move to Lori now.
I've got one more hand raised with Colin.
Okay.
Who had a question, then we'll go Lori.
Yeah, and really quick. Um, first I just want to say Dennis, that was a really good question. I wish I thought of it. The other one is just, um, apologies if I missed this in the conversation, but will that slideshow be made available after the meeting? And can we follow up with any additional questions we might think of after the meeting?
Absolutely.
Awesome. Thank you.
All right, Lori, if, uh, you're here, we're ready to go to community development.
Yes, I'm getting there. I'm also trying to start my video. Okay, let me start at the beginning here. Well, there we go. Okay, thank you. Um, can you see the community development slides?
Yep.
Good, excellent. Uh, again, thank you for taking some time. This is important work. And so we will try to summarize all that we do in community development in 20 or so minutes to allow some time for questions. What we do is so varied though, as Carol said, if there's some items that you want us to get into a little bit deeper, we'd be happy to do that later. We just simply can't cover it all. So we will do our best though, to give you that overview. So Community Development Services, as the name implies, we provide a lot of services to the community and by community, that's residents, that's businesses, that's people doing business in Urbana. People that want to move here, want to work here, want to build here. So those services really range the gamut from the, at like the 30,000 foot level all the way down to ground level. So, um, I kind of consider us the soup to nuts department. We start really at the beginning and take projects all the way through to the end. So we have four divisions doing that work. Uh, we're going to get into the specifics of each of those in a moment, but those divisions are planning, economic development, grants management, and building safety. But as a whole, I want to just touch on, as a whole, here's a Community Development Services Department, our organizational chart. And while there are listed there, those four divisions, to Carol's point, each of our divisions are also really highly collaborative. There's a lot of times we, well, when we're not half-working from home, a lot of hallway conversations really resolve a lot of issues because we have that, that eye on, you know, what would grants do about that, or we need to pull in building safety about that. So there's some incredible collaboration happening, happening, uh, within the divisions and between the divisions, which is amazing to see. So community development has usually about 22 people, regular staff people. We also have a number of seasonal staff, particularly those that are working the farmer's market. But 22 regular employees. And generally speaking, each of the division will get into their boards and commissions a little bit, but generally speaking, community development supports 11, 11 boards and commissions. So quite a lot of work going on, um, after hours in, in those arenas. So other sort of just facts and figures about our department, uh, generally, we are funded out of three, from three sources. The general fund is, is one of our largest ones. We also administer the tax increment financing districts. So there's a lot of support that TIF offers both from staffing perspective as well as activities and our programs, and then also from grants, which we'll get into with a little more detail. Then also wanted to of course touch on the comprehensive plan. Thank you, Carol, for providing such a great overview about that. The way it touches our department is, is a little bit different. So our department has the planners in it. So a lot of the planners are working on the comprehensive plan very closely with Andrea. And by going through that process, what it ends up doing for our department is helping to state those community priorities, which then of course we, we turn into, um, guiding funding for programs, projects and services. Also, those priorities often lead to new or revised regulations. A big example of that would be the zoning ordinance, for instance. We also hear a little bit about, uh, the building code revisions coming up. And then finally, the comprehensive plan, of course, shapes how land should be used, which impacts most of our, most of our programs and most of our divisions. So then, um, before I turn it over to each division, as Carol mentioned, make a note of things that you might want to do a deep dive on and we'll try to do that or work that into one-on-one conversations later. Just wanted to, to remind you to make a note of any of those items. So with no further ado, I'm going to turn it over to each of the division heads to talk for a few moments about their, their topics. So first off is Kevin Garcia in planning.
Thanks Lori. Um, you made me really nostalgic for the hallway conversations. I think that's the thing I miss the most, uh, working from home all these months. Soon hopefully we'll be back. So in planning, um, we have a staff of four professional planners and really we deal with land and how it is used. So essentially anything that happens outside of the right-of-way falls under planning's purview. And we use the zoning ordinance, um, sort of as our, our day-to-day guide for, for how to deal with, with what happens there on, you know, on, on, uh, properties. We also use the comprehensive plan and then other related plans sort of as our guides for the future, to help guide where the city is going, you know, not just today, but years down the road. On a day-to-day basis, our planners are doing a lot of different things. Fielding land use and zoning questions from citizens, doing casework and writing reports. And we write a lot of reports, um, for our, our boards, commissions and, and council, of course. I'm also coordinating the staff meetings that we have, like Carol mentioned, the development review team. And we also have some smaller teams for, for more specific tasks. Um, and then planners are also, uh, they, they find time to work on sort of longer-term plans, like the comprehensive plan and then projects. Like as Lori mentioned, sometimes the zoning ordinance, um, we need to make amendments to that. If there are certain things that are not working for us. The city council will typically see things that are, are larger developments that could really have big impacts on the community or on neighbors. So things like special use permits, planned unit developments, uh, larger subdivisions, rezoning of parcels from one zone to another. Those are all things that council will see. Occasionally you'll see a historic preservation case. Um, you might see some text amendments, like for the zoning ordinance, as I mentioned. Also, uh, more rarely, you'll, you'll see plans come before you. So, uh, council gets the, gets to make final approval on comprehensive plan and then on other specific plans like bicycle and pedestrian master plans and neighborhood specific plans. Lori mentioned planning has four boards and commissions under our purview, so I'll just run through those real quick. So the plan commission, they review those larger plans like the comp plan. They review rezoning cases and larger subdivisions, which then get forwarded on to council. The zoning board of appeals mostly handles variance requests. So if somebody wants to do, uh, something that is slightly different than the zoning ordinance allows, they're, they ask for a variance, um, that goes first through the zoning board and oftentimes the city council. Zoning board also handles what are called conditional use permits. Uh, we have the design review board and they review developments in specific districts. Right now we have three design districts in the city. The, the development review board, um, reviews the developments in those districts to ensure that they meet adopted design standards. And then finally, we staff the historic preservation commission, which, uh, their main job is reviewing, they have a couple of main jobs, reviewing applications for historic landmarks and districts, and then reviewing plans for any exterior work that people want to do on those landmark buildings. Just a quick note, our historic preservation ordinance only focuses on the exterior. So it doesn't, um, our rules don't, uh, don't govern what you can do with the interior of your historic property. We, I think planning by its very nature, uh, needs to be really collaborative, since we deal with so many different things, um, land use related. So we, we coordinate at, you know, at, at times we coordinate with every city department on our various projects. Uh, as Carol mentioned, we, there's a, a big team that meets once a week called the development review team. Um, the planning division runs the development review team and then we discuss developments and projects with public works, police, fire, and the executive departments at those meetings. Nearly, well, maybe not even nearly, I'd say everything that council sees that comes out of the planning division has gone through at least one round at the development review team. So everything that comes to council has gone through those, you know, somebody from those other departments has seen it before it makes its way up to council. Planning is, is easy and how we're funded, we're funded by the general fund. Uh, occasionally we'll get a grant to do a specific project, um, but that's, that's pretty rare. So mostly general fund. Um, and then, well, most of the projects, we, um, most of the projects in the, in the planning division don't require any sort of city funding. Some of them do, and that is where our economic development division comes in. So with that, I will turn it over to Steph McMahon to discuss what the economic development division does. And there you go, Steph.
Thanks Kevin. Hi, everyone. I'm Steph McMahon, the economic development supervisor. And our division includes the arts and culture program, the Urbana's market at the square, and economic development. Rachel Storm is our coordinator for the arts and culture program. She does an amazing job. She awards and administers grants to local artists and all over the community. So, and then she works with them to make sure, especially last year, she had quite a challenge, uh, turning a lot of the public events into safe public events. And so that takes a lot of her time, but she also initiates a lot of programs, including, uh, items such as the poet laureate program for Urbana, poems on glass, the young artist studio, and so many more. Um, we do have an arts and culture Facebook page, which I invite you to watch and see new programs that come up because she is always working, um, very hard to bring new ideas to the community. Rachel also oversees, um, a lot of high school and college interns who she brings in and coordinates to help with the city's, uh, arts and culture program. She would normally come to council with, she's received a grant or to give a report on the arts is when you would most likely see her at a council meeting. And she's mostly funded through TIF and the general fund. The Urbana's market on the square, our market coordinator is Brian Heaton. Uh, the market runs from May through October and in my opinion is the best market in the state. Chicago might argue with us, but, uh, definitely the best downstate farmer's market. And, uh, if you haven't been, you really should go. Brian meets quarterly with, uh, a market advisory board. And, um, he coordinates and runs the market with a small staff over the summer. And so he is very busy during the year coordinating vendors. Uh, he also works with public, uh, works at times to make sure that he had a safe market last year with COVID and, uh, works with the health department a little bit to, to keep that all running. Uh, Brian would probably come to council if he had received a grant, uh, or if anything changed within the market that needed council approval. I forgot to mention also that Rachel, uh, works with the Urbana Arts and Culture Commission. That meets monthly and is a very engaged board. Uh, and so both of them have a great team on their boards and commissions who support them. On the economic development side, it's me and Darius White. And we work to support our local businesses with, and entrepreneurs to try to keep them in business. We, um, I, we issue TIF grants, small business development and opening grants to new and expanding businesses. We also have another, uh, TIF grant program called a TIF incentive redevelopment, TIF RIP redevelopment incentive program. And then I also help administer larger redevelopment agreements. And that's when I would normally come to council to bring you those redevelopment agreements that have been coordinated with our businesses. Darius and I also administer the TIF program and the enterprise zone. And so I meet annually with a TIF review board and meet bi-annually with an enterprise zone advisory board. The enterprise zone includes our Think Urbana, uh, program that we are working to encourage people to build homes and move to Urbana. And so we work closely with them in administering that program. Um, all of us work closely together. We're working on plans to activate the downtown for reopening after COVID. So we'll be, uh, working even with the executive team and public works to see what events we can have and how can we have safe events and promotions to, to promote our businesses and the downtown. So we, we also work very closely with, um, planning and building safety to make sure that we don't award grants to businesses until they have certificates of occupancy and they are in compliance with city code. So that's in a nutshell what we do. So, and occasionally we do cross paths with the grants management program. So I will pass it off to Sheila Dodd, who, uh, runs that program.
Sheila, you're muted.
Thank you, Jared.
You're welcome.
Hi, I'm Sheila Dodd. I'm the grants manager in the community development services department. Myself, Brayden Belcher, who is our community development specialist, and Heather Ann Lehman, who is our office specialist. Each year, we will bring an annual action plan, um, to council. It's developed outlining how to address needs identified in the consolidated plan, which address affordable housing and community development needs in Urbana. The plan is part of a five-year consolidated plan, which is the framework for a community-wide dialogue to identify housing and community development priorities that align and focus funding from our two HUD formula grant programs. The Community Development Block Grant Program, or CDBG, and the Home Investment Partnership Program, also known as HOM. The annual action plan identifies projects and activities to be undertaken by the city in the coming year utilizing funds from these two programs. Every CDBG-funded activity must either principally benefit low and moderate income residents, aid in the preservation or elimination of slums or blight, or meet an urgent community development need. Annually, our average allocation for CDBG is $450,000. Urbana's portion of the Home Investment Partnership is about $225,000. And most years, we act as the administrator and pass-through agency for the emergency solutions grant, um, that comes through the state of Illinois. This grant provides services to homeless or near homeless. And this year our grantees that we're partnering with are the CUGO at Home. And this year, our grantees that we're partnering with are the CUGO at Home to operate their emergency shelter in Cunningham Township to operate a rapid rehousing program. Grants works very closely with police and fire with their grant programs, finance and legal, and meeting the federal requirements and reimbursements of funds, and along with the Executive Department on Community Needs. We have one board, the Community Development Commission, that meets monthly and they assist staff in determining programming guidelines in implementing the consolidated and annual action plans. With that, I will turn it over to Building Safety.
Thank you, Sheila. As I mentioned, my name is Nick Hanson. I'm the Building Official for the City of Urbana and oversee the Building Safety Division. The Building Safety Division is responsible for the enforcement of the codes and ordinances adopted by the City of Urbana. This includes codes for new to existing construction and from residential to commercial properties. Last year, our division oversold $88 million in commercial construction in addition to 22 new residential properties and hundreds of other permits. In addition, the Building Safety Division is also responsible for responding to both tenant and neighborhood complaints. Currently, we are staffed by six inspectors. This includes myself, the Building Official, the Plumbing Mechanical Inspector, the Electrical Inspector, and three Property Maintenance Inspectors. The Property Maintenance Inspectors are responsible for systematic inspections of rental properties, tenant complaints, enforcement of the city's environmental ordinances, including items such as trash, weeds, grass, and snow. The Building Safety Division is also in the process of reviewing and preparing for the adoption of the International Code Council's 21 Codes. Once the codes are reviewed by staff and approved by the Appeals Board, these codes will be brought to the city council for adoption. Currently, Building Safety is supported by two boards, the Building Safety Code Board of Appeals and the Property Maintenance Code Board of Appeals. These boards are responsible for providing direction for code enforcement when a code interpretation is questioned. As we work through the process of adopting the 2021 Codes, we will be combining these boards to help maintain the required number of qualified and dedicated professionals on one board. Building Safety is a regular communication with planning and zoning, Fire Department, and Public Works. As experts in their own fields, each department is responsible for reviewing permit applications that are submitted to the city and providing comments. The previously mentioned comprehensive plan helps determine the appropriate zoning for future developments, which in turns determines what type of construction and/or business may be permitted on the desired property. Building Safety is funded by the General Fund through the fees collected for building permits, plan review, and rental registration.
I think that does it right, Nick?
That's it.
Thank you. All right, well, that in a nutshell is Community Development Services, and it looks like we have a few minutes for questions.
Anybody have questions on community development? Grace, I saw you get me up.
Thank you. I had a few questions for Sheila Dodd, if I could please. One was just a quick logistical one, talking about the budget and that 450,000 annual budget. I wondered, wondering if that was total for Grants Management? And if that is just the operational cost of that division? Or if that is further dispersed through subsequent grants to other organizations?
It's our total allocation that we get from HUD. And of that, 20% is used for our operational costs. And so typically, we will fund public service activities, like we might give funding to a social service agency through our consolidated social service funding. We might run a housing rehab program for seniors or persons with disabilities. Sometimes we do infrastructure projects in a targeted neighborhood. So there's a variety of things that, that comes out of that pot of funding. The HOM program, our total allocation is a little over 800,000, but Urbana acts as the administrative agency. And the consortium is made up of Champaign County, City of Champaign, and the City of Urbana. Funds are divided up based on population size. So Urbana gets about 30% of that pot of money. And then we can use that for affordable housing projects. So Crystal View had home funds in it, trying to think of some others. We used to do a whole house rehab program where for individual owner-occupied houses, we would bring them up to code. But the difference between the two pots of money, HOM has to help a housing unit and CDBG funding has to help low to moderate income persons. And is a lot more flexible.
Thank you. Or we can come back for my second question.
We'll jump to Colin real quick and see how much time we have left.
And if this turns out to be a longer one, I suppose you can jump to Grace before answering. But I was curious if you could do, I guess this is a broader question for the department as a whole, but a little bit deeper dive in how the city prioritizes local business development. I know there's mention of, you know, prioritizing small and newly expanded businesses. I'm curious about in what ways the city prioritizes, like, businesses started by Urbana residents?
Yeah, I think we could talk about a deeper dive in another session or one-on-one. I think that might be best.
Grace, did you want to ask your other question real quick?
Sure. This was another one for Sheila Dodd again, please. Because you mentioned the community-wide dialogue around planning and housing. And I was just wondering if you could elaborate a little more about that, particularly if there's input from the public or it's mostly off the comprehensive plan? Just a little bit about that community-wide dialogue.
Sure. And, or every five years, we do a deep dive into the community needs. And we reach out to a wide variety of agencies, public health, mental health board, social service agencies, Human Services Council, our homeless providers, just a wide variety of people as well as the public. And when we did our five-year plan last year, it was thankfully before COVID. We did a survey. We got input from over 100 different residents identifying like what they saw the top needs in the community were. And then we'll use that to help guide us as we move forward in making decisions. When COVID happened, we reached out to our social service agencies as well as our businesses and just to try to find who needed help and where and how we could help with any COVID funding that came through the city. So it's very much driven by public needs and assessments.
Thanks, Sheila. Well, we're at 6:59, so we're gonna go ahead and keep moving right along. Thank you to all the city staff for presenting this evening and giving us all that helpful information. All right, so next on our agenda, under our public input and presentations, is the BPEC Annual Report. I believe Bill Brown is gonna lead us in that.
Yeah, I'm gonna try to share my screen or my PDF report. I'm gonna keep my video muted because my computer's been kind of freezing up the last couple of weeks. So can you see that okay now?
Yep.
Okay. So every year, the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Commission produces an annual report presented to city council just to show what we've been working on for the past year. So this is the presentation for that. I think I can get through it in probably five or 10 minutes, depending how many questions y'all have. So this is, it's just a 12-page PDF people can download from our materials today. If you print it out, we, we have kind of a back cover, so it works better if it's printed. And a long 12-page PDF, we want to give special attention to the back cover too. But this is the front, the first page, it's a picture of a bike wreck demo. This is part of Light the Night on Campus, an annual event where students are offered free lights for their bicycles. And we, as a city, support that financially. And in the past, we've also had some staff show up. This year, it was mostly campus organizations and community organizations that did the installation of bike lights, but we did support it financially. We have 11 members. One of these, Leo, took off in the middle of the year to give his family more attention. He has a new baby, so we have an opening right now. For that position, we also have a new position we created, I'll talk a little bit about, for a student to participate. But we have participation from School District, University of Illinois. We have a voting member from Public Works in the City of Urbana. And then I'm Chair, and we have people from Park District as well. Just briefly to cover how BPEC got to where it was, we, it was established about 15 years ago to analyze proposed routing, operating, making recommendations on various aspects of bicycling and walking facilities, and recommendations on prioritizing capital improvements. And also do education and public outreach. The first master plan was adopted in 2008. We got a bronze-level bicycle-friendly community from American League of Bicyclists in 2010. And we obtained gold level first and still only gold level, I believe, in Illinois. Our latest update to Bicycle Master Plan was improved on 2016. And then it was reevaluated in 2018. And we maintained that gold level standing for another few years. And that will be coming up for evaluation again later this year. It's evaluated what they used to call the five Es, Engineering, Education Enforcement, Engineering, Education Encouragement, Enforcement, and Evaluation. Last few years, they added equity to that. And then this year, they decided to get rid of enforcement, recognizing that there's potential for disparate impact in communities of color if they over, if we overemphasize enforcement. So they're taking that out completely and they're making equity a more encompassing aspect. So the other four Es, Engineering, Education, Encouragement, and Evaluation, are all supposed to be viewed through a lens of equity and equity, diversity, and inclusion. So they brought that up to a higher profile. So future evaluations on whether you're gold level, silver, diamond, whatever, will be based on these new criteria. The enforcement criteria have been moved around a little bit. So enforcement in Urbana used to generally means if you're on a bicycle and you run a stop sign or do something you shouldn't, you get a chance to correct it. You don't get a ticket usually. You can, you can get a ticket with a fine, and some people do. But the first ticket you get, you can go online and do an online course and the fine will be dropped. Enforcement should also focus on car, car behavior. People driving around cyclists and pedestrians and also focus on dangerous driving. So our first master plan, first pedestrian master plan was adopted last year as well as a bicycle wayfinding plan. So those are two significant accomplishments. Infrastructure improvements, there weren't a whole lot this year, but we wound up the M-Corps project, the last phase of that from Wright Street to Lincoln. Everybody is familiar with that. Or I'm sorry, it's the only one from Lincoln to Downtown to Race Street. And the only thing left on that is striping the bicycle lanes. We did write two letters of support. We approved a letter of support for the City of Urbana's application for ITUP grant for Baker's Lane Multi-Use Path that would be along the Scottswood Neighborhood along the east side of what Weaver Park. And the Urbana Park District Broadway Avenue Multi-Use Path from Park Street to Stevens Drive. That includes a pedestrian bridge over the creek there. So the planning, you guys already saw the pedestrian master plan that was approved by city council in August. It's available online. That was a multi-year effort. And for, for all these big plans, Champaign County Regional Planning Commission acts as the, the people that actually write up the plan. We don't have staff support in BPEC. We have the one member from, from the Public Works Department, but she doesn't really have the time to offer staff support. We do have someone to take minutes and publish the minutes. And then, of course, we have UPTV support. But anything that we do, we do on our own. We do all of our own agendas and activities. So that was a big plan, the pedestrian master plan. Cover a lot of different things. You probably remember all those, but I want to make sure to get it in the annual report. And we also did the wayfinding plan that was because of, that was to follow up through on a recommendation from the Bicycle Master Plan. To, so to meet that goal, this wayfinding plan was also a multi-year plan that's been been around for a while. I had a lot of public input on it and it was finally wrapped up this year too. And you guys also saw that, you approved that in August. So there's a link to that if people want more information. But that's mostly just to provide signage and routing. So we have more consistent ways to make sure people know the best ways to get around by bike and how to get to various locations and destinations. The other thing that finished up this year was the KRT Extension Study. That was the one that examined whether we should, that would be the rail with trail development, if we are able to put a trail alongside the rail, an active rail. And it would be the first one in Champaign County, and there are, but there are good examples in Bloomington and other nearby places. So the main focus of this was how that connect, how those connections would be made. So they did a lot of analysis and a lot of public input and came up with recommendations on whether it should be on the north or south side. And so that's, that's in the can. So we have that. And that, that will help get, hopefully will help get funding for that. You have to have a good plan and have shown that you've really paid attention to all the details before you can get, have a good chance of getting funding. The, the big effort this year, you remember in January, we met a president, made a presentation on what Vision Zero is and how other communities have used it to reduce traffic fatalities and serious injuries. In 2020, as far as I know, we didn't have any pedestrian or cyclist fatalities in, in town. We did have one already this year. We had a pedestrian fatality on East Main Street and we had one in 2019 Vine and Main. But we did have quite a few crashes with injuries. So using the Vision Zero approach, we'll be looking at all those and seeing if there's things that we can do education-wise or infrastructure-wise to try to reduce those. We did have, we tried to get a grant through the U of I that would have been more of a planning grant. That wasn't selected for funding. We did work with a, the Community Learning Lab at the U of I is a good organization to work with for short-term projects. So we worked with someone to draft a public fact sheet to introduce the program. And Mayor Marlin attended with me and a couple of other BPEC members on a Zoom meeting for World, United Nations World Day of Remembrance. And we, one of our BPEC members also presented some statistics for the RPC Technical and Policy Committees. The reason RPCs involve so much with bicycle and pedestrian activities is that there are local metropolitan planning organization. Any, any metropolitan areas in the US with 50,000 or more people have to have a metropolitan planning organization in order to receive federal funding. So they are funded partially through federal funding to help develop, to do a lot of the planning for transportation infrastructure. So this just talks more about what Vision Zero is. And we still need to create a task force. We've made a little bit of progress in trying to figure out what that's going to look like. We think we'll have probably a relatively small task force with a larger, I forget what we're gonna call it, a larger committee to have input to the task force. So a large group of people with, from a lot of different organizations that would probably meet once or twice a year with a smaller task force that would actually meet to do the work developing the plan. So that's where we are with that. We did make So that's where we are with that. We did make the one change to BPAC bylaws to allow a youth member. And I was going to send out the application. I have some contacts at each school. I was going to send out applications for that, but now it's school, spring break. So I'm going to wait just another week or so and make sure everybody has the equal opportunity to apply for that. The other thing and then our, at our December meeting, we we invited one of the I dot planners or funders to attend via Zoom. That's one nice thing about Zoom is it's it's easier to get people at the state level to attend your meetings, but recognizing, we did have three bicycle fatalities in the county this year, and all three of them were on rural highways near populated areas. So we demonstrated how using heat maps from publicly available data from sports apps and things like that, you can show in this case, this is Route 10. This is the Sand Lake subdivision. You might be familiar. If you take Route 10 out to Clinton Lake, you go right by here. But there it's a populated area here. They could use some way to get across here, but also recreational cyclists from here like to go up and down the Sangamon on each side. And really the only way to connect, make this connection is on Route 10 and there's no shoulder there. So it's a, it's kind of a dangerous area along with other areas. This isn't one of the locations where somebody was killed this year, but the others are pretty similar. This is why, no, actually I didn't show that one. There's one near Mohammed and this is if you take Race Street Extended, there's a county highway you have to make a jog on. So most of us have learned not to do this, but if you're just north of here, there's another road. There's one road you can get across there. You can't go west, but you can go east and it's a gravel road. So people from U of I, they're kind of exploring roads or people that are braver, I guess, and willing to take the county highway with no shoulder. We'll go ahead and let's take that half mile area there. This is on 150 toward Mohammed. There's a short segment there in order to get over the interstate. There's a bridge here. So we were showing the I dot person how each of those areas are relatively small areas. So when they resurfaces instead of not doing any shoulder or doing a three foot shoulder, which was their practice before we're trying to get them to do four foot shoulders. And there's also a bill at the House right now. I forget the number, it might 270 or 470 that would, it's a house bill that would would have I dot provide full funding for bicycle and pedestrian facilities as needed on state highways within a mile of populated areas and populated areas aren't necessarily just like champagne or banner. It could be these small areas that just are populated. So we talked quite a bit about the impact of pandemic on truck transportation. Vehicle traffic was lower, but vehicle speeds were higher nationally. Crashes per vehicle mile driven increased. We saw a lot more people out, a lot of people out walking, going to do something to get away from work at home. They took a lot more walks. Restaurant bars, using outdoor spaces, something we've advocated for a long time that has a natural speed reduction on the, on the roads nearby. There weren't any organized activities really. There were mostly organized activities were canceled, but some people did come up with some creative ways to like, I think the arts program may have even helped sponsor the one that had various art exhibits around town. So you could kind of design your own tour for that. Some people took advantage of that. And then we also discussed our BPAC webpage. We need to work on tactical urbanism. That might be a whole other topic, but if you, if you're interested in that, you can talk to me about it. And then U of I has a new regional bicycle registration program. We discussed the Vine and Main intersection report that also was presented to council. Outdoor seating and temporary pedestrian streets or play streets to get, allow people to use streets for more more social activity and recognize them more as a public space that should be shared rather than just used for vehicles alone. And we do have in our ordinance in our in our city code, we have the concept of play streets and the city engineer has the capability of declaring temporary play streets. And just a couple of final pictures to end up the report. That's anonymous, anonymous Annie Adams in her Christmas bike tour outfit and a Riggs Riggs photo. And then our back cover just kind of reviews Vision Zero. And you may remember in January, I showed a couple of YouTube's videos sort of encapsulated why the goal should be zero fatalities. You can't really have a goal higher than that. So that's the report. I'm sorry. It took a little bit more than 10 minutes. Are there any questions?
Any questions from council members for Bill? I've not seen any hands raised. Thanks a lot, Bill, for providing that report for us. Any final thoughts?
No, we need every third, third Tuesday of every month. So we have a meeting tomorrow night if anybody's interested in tuning in.
Okay. Thanks, Bill. All right, we're gonna go ahead to public input for tonight. So any members of the public in attendance, go ahead and hit that hand raise button and I will call on folks as I see their hands come up. Got one hand raised right now. Dr. Evelyn Underwood. Dr. Underwood, go ahead. You're unmuted.
Hello, I see that I am unmuted. I just wanted to say that I'm back from my surgery in Barnes, at Barnes Jewish Hospital in St. Louis, Missouri. And I'm recovering and I'm listening in. Thank you.
Thank you. Glad to, glad you're recovering and glad to have you back. All right. Any other members of the public who wish to comment? Go ahead and give another minute for people to raise their hands. Got Grace Wilkin with her hand up.
Hey, can you hear me? Thank you. My name is Grace Wilkin and I'm a resident of Urbana in Ward Six. And I just wanted to quickly say that I appreciate the transparency of holding the training session earlier this evening that was open to the public as well, because I think that it's really important that everyone has a basic understanding of city government. I think there's a lot of stuff in that presentation that was helpful to current and potential city council members, but also a lot of members of the public when they're wondering who deals with a certain aspect of our operations. So I think that that's really helpful. And I appreciate that token of transparency for everyone. Especially since each city can be vastly different in its governing, even in our regional area. Another thing that I was wondering on that is how we work towards our values and internal compass and work towards equity and inclusion. While I see the contradiction of saying that the city's human rights ordinance doesn't apply to the city itself and discriminating future city staff based on criminal background checks. I see that as a way of limiting our equity and inclusion in the city by missing out on candidates who might otherwise have applied or been hired. If it's not something that's relevant to their position that they needed a background check for a certain area, especially if Urbana has an ordinance that enforces that on any other business or organization. So I hope that we can continue to work towards that. And I'm interested to see the discussion tonight on that human rights ordinance. And then lastly, I just wanted to throw in my support for all of the items on the agenda that are in regards to assistance for first followers, because they are a wonderful grassroots organization that is really filling in a big gap in the system. And I think it's great that they are finally getting some kind of established assistance from the city. So thank you for having that on the agenda and I hope that that passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Grace. All right. Next I've got Meg McDonald.
Hello, can you hear me?
Sure can.
Thank you. All right. My name's Meg McDonald. My pronouns are she, they. I am a resident of Ward Five. Didn't really have a whole lot prepared. I guess I want to reiterate what Grace just said about thanking you all for the presentation for the public and for your future coworkers possibly. Think that transparency for letting, letting the public in on the meeting too is a yeah, really appreciated. So thank you. What else can I bring up? I want to reestablish that point that Carol Mitten said about budget and that that's what you value over something else, because you can't do it all. So I think that that's a discussion item later on for alternatives to the police budget. So I think that maybe as far as like public safety goes and what we can be investing in as far as like what actually keeps people safe, like food, housing and mental health services and stuff like that. I think we have a really good chance to be creative here. I think the update on the one door program is going to be good. I think I'm, I'm pretty sure I saw it in action like on Friday. It was a little intimidating just because the police are intimidating and not, maybe not to everybody, but because of my relationship and my understanding and just the situation itself. I don't want to give too much away about this person, but it seems like they were having a mental health struggle and they were on the ground with their hood up and the police were just kind of standing there. And it took about 10 and I, I, I have witnessed interactions before, just trying to make sure that people are safe on all ends. And so I, in that moment, I didn't feel confident enough to go up and make sure that everybody was okay, but it was at the park. It was in a public area. So, but that person eventually did get EMT called OSF and and it was fine, but I just can't help it. And so I think that that might have been the one door policy or program being put into use. I can't be sure, but I think it's a, it's a good start and I don't know if if we could be maybe be more creative with maybe having a like mental health response line and not just having like one phone number to call, like 911 gets you the closest responders, right? So maybe we have a specific number like in Eugene, Oregon. They have a model called the Coots Model. You could Google that maybe afterwards, if you were interested in that. And anyway, out of the what was it? Sam, what was the statistic out of like 440,000? Out of how many? Out of 25,000 police calls for mental health services, only 0.6% needed cop backup. So I'm sorry that I didn't have that statistic right on hand for you, but hopefully you'll just look more into creative solutions and know that it doesn't just have to be a one stop shop, basically. And about almost a code, since I have 15 seconds left, there was a miscommunication on the, with, with the Urbana City's Facebook page. And I know that you've corrected it now and I appreciate that. But that's just something to that like got through like three or four different people before it was, it was caught. So just something to think about. Thank you.
Thank you, Meg. All right, Colin, you're up next.
Okay, there it is. My mute icon didn't show up for some reason. I'll say that Grace and Meg said a lot of what I wanted to say about police response and that sort of thing. But I do want to personally thank the city staff and the council for the opportunity to join the panel tonight and get a preview of what I might be looking at if I'm elected in April. Beyond that, one thing, I know there's a struggle in when talking about like criminal backgrounds and hiring. My workplace actually banned the box several years ago, before I started there seven years ago. And the way that we've had that work there is, you know, there's some positions like a cashier or somebody who deals with a safe where, okay, sure, you don't want someone with like a history of burglary or something like that. But what we do instead is that our business has made a commitment not to conduct a background check until a decision to make an offer has been made. At the very least, I would suggest that could be a compromised position that the city could consider. Thank you very much and have a great night.
Thank you, Colin. Next, I've got Sarah Nixon.
Hello, city council. This is Sarah Nixon. I want to say first that all of you, with the exception of Mr. Jared Miller, have failed Urbana and have failed Aliyah Lewis by voting to approve the promotion last week Corey Coker to lieutenant despite his demonstrated and fully documented background of disdain for Urbana's African-American community, for women, for children. And his failure to act appropriately, failure to show leadership in the specifically in the Aliyah Lewis arrest case. Secondly, I'd like to thank Colin Dodson for sharing and proposing a sensible policy when it comes to hiring and criminal background checks. I, I also, I, I worked with first followers a few years ago on a project specifically the ban the box project and compiling data in the Urbana-Champaign area on employers who were not respecting the ban the box legislation. And it deeply pains me and horrifies me that the city of Urbana itself thumbs its nose at the ban the box practice and and philosophy, which is rooted simply in the most basic acknowledgement of of human dignity and employment rights that we can offer to people. I'd also like to express disappointment. I heard Colin Dodson pose a question to the city with regard to the city's practices in terms of promoting local businesses during the session you had prior to this meeting, meeting. And I just want to comment that the the public is here. We're listening. We're engaged and we're interested in these questions. And rather than answer the question, which was something along the lines of how does the city prioritize local business? The response from the city staff was, oh, that would be a deeper dive and we're not basically not prepared to answer the question publicly. Yet, once again, the public is here. We are participating. We are listening and we have a priority interest in this issue and in all governance issues. So it was very disappointing to hear the question just dismissed and disregarded. Finally, I'd like to briefly comment on the one door program. It appears increasingly to be it, it appears increasingly that the wonder program is nothing more than a public relations stunt. And the program seems to be stalled and going nowhere. Our understanding, the public's understanding is that Lieutenant Joel Sanders, who apparently was, you know, lauded as the figurehead and the the entity that was leading the one door initiative has, has walked away. And what's going to happen in, in, in the absence of this leadership, which some would say was questionable in the first place? Where's one door going? When is this pilot project going to get off the ground? And on that note, I would like to share my or provide a comment from personal experience and perspective that the city and the Urbana Police Department are egregiously failing. People impacted by domestic violence. People impacted by domestic violence, people impacted by family violence, people impacted by child abuse, and the city and the Urbana Police Department have a long history of failure in these areas and nowhere have we seen these issues included and addressed, even in the draft level proposals and documents scant as they are, that we've seen so far that, you know, sort of vaguely kind of sketch out a one door program. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sarah. All right, next I have got Julie Watkins.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can, go ahead.
Okay. My name is Julie Watkins, I'm an Urbana resident. I wanted, I thank you for the opportunity to give input. I wanted to comment about a big contradiction I saw last week. A question was raised about a case currently under investigation, which was called out of order, but promoting somebody significantly involved with that same case was in order? Was it some kind of a trade-off? It looked bad. People last week have told you why. Shouldn't the promotion have been postponed until the case was resolved if the council was actually neutral about this? It seems to me you decided to have your cake and eat it too. I didn't like that. At least the vote wasn't unanimous. Thank you for other public input, have to, that's addressed this.
Okay, thanks, Julie. Next, I've got Alan Max Xerod.
Can you hear me?
Can you? Go ahead.
All right. Alan Max Xerod, resident of Urbana, campaign lead of No AMR Shutoffs. Again, coalition of over four dozen member organizations spanning the state, north and south, east and west. The latest three organizations that have joined include Indivisible Metro East, Southern Illinois Democratic Socialists of America, as well as Progressives of Pecan, Illinois. I'm speaking to you, of course, about continued water shut offs. The latest data as made available today has 151 water shut offs in the county, 97 in Champagne, 49 in Urbana. None of those shut off notices have been sent to the Public Health District, to the best of my knowledge, and that problem is about to get a lot worse. The Illinois Commerce Commission has proposed a reopening plan, and it is full of the same gaps that we saw when they adopted the winter moratorium rules early, all the way back in September 22nd of last year. They only provide waivers of utility reconnections fees to people who qualify for the low income home energy assistance program. Tens of thousands less people have successfully received the low income home energy assistance program benefits as compared to last year. Over 160,000 so far have received the benefits and the lie heap season, again, low income home energy assistance program, was extended two months earlier in last year. As to say, if we were comparing apples to apples, we already would have been through our lie heap season and had almost 25% less people receiving them. And I don't think anybody with any credibility would say that there was any less of a need. In fact, there was much more of a need for the low income home energy assistance program. The Champagne County Regional Planning Commission has stated repeatedly that they have plenty of funding available. Guess what that means? It means people under chronic fatigue, chronic stress, fear for their safety, are not able to navigate our means tested subsidy programs successfully. And last time this happened, we saw an over 60% increase in every category of COVID in terms of positive caseload, in terms of being in a hospital, in terms of being in the ICU, in terms of being on a ventilator, in terms of dying. And when we have barely gotten to one in four Illinoisans vaccinated, and in the space of three weeks, we may be resuming those shut offs, let's talk about that. Do you think the people who are most vulnerable have already gotten the vaccine? Do you think that the people who have struggled to complete the lie heap application and have indeed not successfully done so have gotten the vaccine? Do you think that we are going to have another COVID spike like we did last time? I don't see any public health expert that would recommend even now discontinuing utility protections. And if any of you are available 11:30 on Thursday, we need you to sign up to talk to the Illinois Commerce Commission to tell them that we cannot resume utility shut offs. By the way, all their profits per share have met or exceeded their profits of last year despite the increase in the number of deaths. Have a good night.
Thank you, Ellen. All right, next I've got Tracy Chong.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Tracy Chong from Urbana. First, I would like to express disappointment that Sergeant Coker was promoted last week. It was quite concerning to see that, to see him refuse to even admit the slightest remorse at his attitude and to see him refuse to acknowledge that that was not the right attitude for a police officer to have, let alone someone in a leadership position. So yeah, I just like really disappointed at how most of city council members just didn't seem to think it was a problem at all. Next, I would like to say that I'm concerned about the city's use of background checks in the city's job application process. I hope that you guys, when you have your discussion tonight, can make a distinction between Urbana's broader, broader human rights ordinance versus the discussion about what is allowed by the state when a background check is relevant to the job. The point, the concerning point is that the city brings up the issue of background checks at the very early stages of the job application, even at the job advertisement stage, when they're advertising the job. And this is against Urbana human rights ordinance and it's also just generally very intimidating to applicants. What's also concerning is that this issue has been brought up to the Civil Service Commission and they just don't seem to care about, care that their job ads are in violation of the ordinance. And to make matters worse, it seems like we are leaning towards removing the means of ensuring that this does not happen. So please don't confuse the discussion by using examples, like when city staff uses examples of, oh yeah, we need to do a background check at the final stage of the hiring process to make sure this city accountant does not, has not been convicted of embezzlement. I don't know, just, just, that's not the point that we are trying, that we should be discussing. So I hope that you guys are not confused when city staff just tries to use such examples to, to, to justify what Urbana is doing. So yeah, I think that's all. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you, Tracy. All right, next I've got Christopher Hansen.
Hey, Jared, can you hear me?
Sure, can you? Go ahead.
Thanks, this is Christopher Hansen. So I guess first I just wanted to point out, it seemed like there were a couple items added to the agenda, the agenda was modified at the last minute, just urging the city again to give the public is, and the council members as much time as possible to see agenda items. And so I'm not sure why that happened there, but I, I also wanted to agree with what Julie Watkins said earlier about the city having made this rule that we can't discuss the Lewis arrest. I mean, you guys had multiple, multi-hour-long council presentations on that incident. So months later, to say that we can't talk about it is a little hypocritical, so I hope someone from the city administration can explain that. Last week and a few weeks prior, I brought up the issue of Urbana needing to actually identify their FOIA officer on the city website and at the city building. Still haven't done that, that's, that's an easy one that you guys can take on and fix it probably tonight during this meeting. So I just ask you to do that one more time. And onto the issue that I'm really interested in, which is the criminal background checks, I, I don't think that Urbana should be involved in effectively extending the punishments or penalties created by the judiciary. And you do that by putting these requirements in your job listings. And I don't think the city human rights ordinance allows for it. And that's what I think the city has been telling private employers and, and people engaged in housing and things like that. I don't know if anyone in the council has ever done this, but I went on to the city of Urbana Free Library website and I stepped through the employment application process. And you have to check that box about, about saying that you, you need to be able to pass a criminal background check. You cannot submit the application unless you've checked the box. And there's other statements in that application about waiving all liability to the city based on the city's investigation via the Illinois State Police and the FBI. I mean, this is, this is really intimidating stuff. I don't, I don't think the city of Urbana, I don't think this aligns with our values. So I think we should knock it off. And I know there's some notion of, I think it was Todd Rent, maybe made some kind of procedural document or, or commentary about, you know, how to do the criminal, essentially how to discriminate based on criminal background while complying with the ordinance. And if you guys want to modify the ordinance to build that in, then let's have that discussion and that'll be an honest discussion about the issue. But this notion that there's going to be this procedural backdoor, by the way, no, no one can see this procedural backdoor that I guess is probably going to be discussed tonight. It's not on the city website as far as I can find it. I don't know how a private employer would find it. And it's not in the ordinance. So I, I think, I think you should discuss it and if you want to change the ordinance, then I'll, I'll disagree with you, but at least we'll be having an honest discussion about it. And I, last thing I noticed is that there is a, an item on the agenda involving the first followers tonight, and I don't know if they have a representative here, if they'd be willing to, but this might be a good opportunity to ask, ask them what they think about this background check thing. Be getting some of the best information you can get from that group, so. All right, I look forward to the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Christopher. All right, last opportunity for public inputs. Anybody who doesn't, wishes to speak, that raised hand button or what, we'll keep going on. All right, I'm not seeing any more hands up, so we're going to continue on with the agenda. Next, we have staff report and, we've got a few different things to hear from staff this evening. Kick it off, Carol.
Sure. I, I just want to remind folks, we had announced this once before, but at the April 6th meeting of the Sustainability Advisory Committee at 7 o'clock on Zoom, the, the SAC is going to be convening a community dialogue between members of the Amosaco staff and representatives from IEPA. And we've been collecting some documents that we've gotten through FOIA and also that have been shared with the city from Amosaco, and those are all posted on the meeting notice on the Sustainability Advisory Commission website. And there's a notice that went out, I don't know what happened with the Facebook post that someone was referring to, but there's, we issued a press release today and it's posted on the landing page of the city's website, all this information. So just want to ask people to help get the word out to folks that might be interested. And then I know the mayor has a few things.
Mayor.
Yes, I do want to thank members of the public who pointed out the press release was incorrect in stating at the meeting on April 6th what's going to be at the Amosaco factory. It is not, it's a virtual meeting, so it will be the same as we've been doing all along. So thank you for putting that out and making those corrections. Just wanted to let you know that the Chief Seraphin, Lieutenant Bain, and I have been meeting with representatives from the ACLU and the NAACP over the past six weeks on the use of force policy. We've gone through a couple of iterations, we're looking at like what I think is pretty close to a final version now and hope to have that wrapped up in the next few weeks. And so that will be presented to the public. So we've had some very good productive meetings and we're going to have a policy that I think works for the community and that we will be supported by the community. So look forward to bringing that to you. Just one bit of correction of something I heard during public input. We have had about, we do average about 25,000 calls for service to the police department. These are calls that are dispatched by 911, but they are not all mental health related calls. That's the total number of dispatched calls per year. And the, what, what was, I'm not sure what people actually was, were looking at on, on last Friday, but most, 90, over 99.5% of those calls are resolved, they're de-escalated, they are resolved without use of force. So what you were witnessing when you saw the police interacting with an individual is what you, what's typically happening in the city, that an individual is getting at least some help. And what we hope in our one door approach or co-responder approach that we're working on is that we can have even more effective, longer-term support for the people who are, are, are calling for help or that people are getting help for. So anyway, I'll be talking more about that in the discussion item later on. And the other thing I wanted to let folks know is the city council, I sent late this afternoon a copy of a letter that Mayor Finan of Champagne and I, a memo that I sent to the Champagne County Board. I currently this year serve as chair of the Regional Planning Commission, Mayor Finan is the vice chair. Dennis Roberts is the city council representative to the commission. You may have read over the weekend or last week that the Regional Planning Commission is in danger, well, they have experienced a, basically a cutoff of state and funding, federal funding that flows to them due to delays in the county treasurer's office in reconciling accounts, which has led to a delay in the audits being done, which in turn has affected the granting agency with, in turn has affected the status of their grants. Basically, the impact on the community is many of the programs and services that depend on Regional Planning Commission grants, and that's things like lie heap, rental assistance, weatherization, many of the COVID relief plans, many of the transportation projects and that sort of thing are directly impacted by this stoppage of funding. So this is a, this is what I call a crisis, short-term crisis anyway. And what our letter to the county board requested was what RPC was asking for, which is short-term loan from the county to cover the next three months until the audits are able to be finished. And, and then a longer-term evaluation of how RPC will, what the relationship between RC, RPC and the county is going forward, including whether or not RPC should be a standalone agency. So this is a unfolding situation, the county board has, I guess we'll be discussing this probably this week, and we hope that we can get a short-term solution to carry them through till these audits can be caught up and the treasurer's office can get caught up. But this is a serious situation that impacts many, many programs that people are depending on for, for basic necessities right now. And we, we need to address that. And that's all I have.
Anything about the ethics officer?
The ethics officer? Yes, we've, does, I've designated Assistant City Attorney Michelle Brooks as the ethics The ethics officer? Uh, yes. We've does, I've designated, uh, Assistant City Attorney Michelle Brooks as the ethics officer for the city of Urbana. She also serves as the attorney for the Human Resources Department.
Thank you. Any other staff reports? Seen anybody popping in. All right. So we'll keep moving along on the agenda. First up, we have, uh, item six, that is resolution number twenty twenty one dash zero three dash zero eleven R, resolution approving a city of Urbana Community Development Block Grant Program Agreement with the Champagne County Healthcare Consumers nineteen assistance. I'm assuming Sheila is going to pop in to tell us about this.
Yeah, Sheila will also say Claudia Lenhoff is in the waiting room. So if she, uh, wanted to speak, we'd need to promote her to panelist.
Okay, sounds good.
Um, sure. As you remember, back in January, we amended the consolidated plan to add additional cares funding to be used to, uh, prevent, prepare, respond to the pandemic. Um, Champagne County Healthcare Consumers reached out and asked for assistance because they're helping people who, um, first, they don't really have the funds to assist with their limited resources. But they are also a group of people that kind of fall through the cracks. So, um, if somebody, um, is homeless and then goes to the hospital and then they need to be released, but because of COVID, they need to be, um, you know, put in a hotel for a few days, then they've gone to the healthcare consumers for assistance. And so in talking, um, with Claudia and seeing where the gaps in need were, uh, we came up with this to help uh, forty thousand dollars, eighteen thousand to help with housing, two thousand for basic needs assistance. So, um, you know, it can be a variety of things from gas, uh, a few groceries, that type of thing. And then finally to help with a caseworker outreach person to reach out to those underserved or less connected communities, um, to provide them information, uh, on availability of health services or availability to get their COVID shot. Um, if you're not on the internet or you don't have a TV, a lot of times that group of people, um, just is, isn't, act, doesn't have access to the information. So because we have the funding, um, we've brought this to you as it was a recommendation to approve the agreement.
Thanks Sheila. Claudia, did you have anything you wanted to add before we take questions?
Yes. Um, thank you so much for this opportunity and I'm really grateful to, um, Sheila Dodd for taking the time to talk to me. Um, basically we're in a situation where we have a number of clients who are what I would describe as they are homeless, but they are medically fragile. And they cannot stay at the shelter because of their medical conditions. So for example, um, we have one gentleman right now who's been staying at a motel for a while because he had, um, he, he was released from prison a few months ago. Came to the community, came back to the community. He was staying at CU at home. He ended up, um, getting the coronavirus and he actually almost died. Um, he was in the hospital for a number of weeks and, and ICU and he almost died. And then when he was ready to be released from the hospital, they couldn't find a placement for him in a nursing home. This is very, very common right now. Um, people with felony convictions in their background, for example, have a really hard time getting placed in a nursing home, even if their felony convictions were not for anything violent. And even if they would be too ill, um, to do any damage to anybody, they're just, nursing homes right now are just not taking them. And so the best solution for this gentleman was to, um, house him at a motel and he's close to Carl. He has problems breathing. Um, I've been working with him and then also with the Regional Planning Commission Shelter Plus Care Program. And we've actually got an apartment secured for him that he will be able to go to at the end of this month. But, um, it has been really costly, um, to house him at the motel. And we have a number of different clients like this. And basically, um, we are sort of catching the people who fall through the cracks. And a lot of times these are individuals who are medically fragile. They just don't have the option of going to the shelter at CU at home, um, because of their medical conditions. Some people have serious orthopedic conditions, for example, and they cannot get up and down off the floor, you know, to sleep on a mat. Or they just need to be closer to, you know, to a healthcare facility. And, um, it's been a little bit of a, honestly, a little bit of a crisis for our organization because we don't typically do housing, but of course shelter and, uh, and all of that is, is really part of health and well-being. And, um, we have gotten some, you know, we've collaborated with first followers and with Cunningham Township and Regional Planning Commission and all of those. But there are just some people who just fall through the cracks and don't really fit into the other, um, you know, agencies, uh, resources for support. So, um, I'm really hopeful that we can get this funding and continue to help the people like this who kind of fall through those cracks. And then in addition, um, we've been doing a lot of work around COVID, um, testing and vaccination outreach and getting, uh, working with CU PhD, reaching a lot of the harder to reach populations um, and helping them get connected to the vaccine schedules and getting them set up and even taking people to go get their vaccines. And, um, we would love the opportunity to reach out into some of Urbana's neighborhoods that are maybe a little bit less, um, connected, but very much in need of, um, those services. So, um, I just wanted to, you know, give a little bit of background on that. And I also just really wanted to thank, um, Sheila Dodd for, you know, talking through all of this with me. Um, and I'm happy to answer any questions y'all might have.
Thanks Claudia. Uh, council questions for Sheila or Claudia? Who else?
Um, thank you Sheila and Claudia for Claudia, sorry, um, for, for putting together this plan. Uh, Sheila, you had provided some details. I think you said that, uh, that wasn't in the memo. You said the eighteen thousand would be for housing, two thousand for basic needs, and then there was some leftover, what is that, twenty thousand for caseworkers? Is that, is that correct? So is this a fifty percent time caseworker? Is, because twenty thousand doesn't, okay.
Yeah, yes and yes. Um, and actually the budget is on the very last page of the agreement that the.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Gotcha. Oh, yeah. So is there a, a full-time position and Urbana is, is funding part of it, or is this truly a halftime position?
Uh, this would truly be a halftime position specific to, um, outreach into Urbana. Um, our organization right now, we have six, um, staff members. Not all of them are full-time. But, um, but we, we are really at capacity already with the regular work that, that we do. And so we would envision this person as somebody who could actually like feet on the ground, go out into the, into the community um, in the certain neighborhoods in Urbana and just do a lot of, um, just very direct outreach and education and then linkage to the services. So it would be an additional person for our organization for this period of time. And we would prioritize hiring somebody who's bilingual, um, in English and Spanish. Um, most of our staff are bilingual in English and Spanish, um, myself included. But for this person, for this position, we would definitely prioritize hiring somebody who is also bilingual.
And then, um, the eighteen thousand for the, uh, for the housing assistance, is that only for motels? Or are you also helping with down payments for, for getting into an apartment? What do you envision the eighteen thousand being used for?
Um, well, my, my, I'm sorry, I have a cat next to me who's trying, I talk with my hands and she's trying to play with me. Um, well, just as an example, during the month of February, I think we spent a, a little bit over sixteen hundred on motels. So, um, this would give us the flexibility to do either of those. Um, the, and it sort of depends what the housing opportunity is for the person. Um, so if it is somebody who can actually get housing, but they just can't afford, um, you know, maybe the first month's rent or the deposit. And I know that there are other programs out there right now, but you know, like, um, y'all were just talking about the funding that Regional Planning Commission has is a little bit up in the air, um, for that rent assistance. And I know Cunningham Township has also been doing a lot. Um, but part of it is also case management and taking the time to work with the person. So, um, with the eighteen thousand, I think it would give us the flexibility to see what the person needs. And, um, you know, uh, I, I am not sure exactly right now. It just will depend on each individual, um, person. I have, we have, um, three or four people in a motel right now. And I think each one of those individuals, I've worked to get them into programs where they will actually not have to be the people to come up with, um, the deposit and first month's rent. But that has to do with their unique circumstances as individuals with disabilities who qualify for, you know, shelter plus care and other programs like that. But not everybody's in that situation. Some people are, you know, not disabled, but they are just homeless right now and they're going to need that kind of help. So it would just give us the flexibility for what the person needs.
I guess my last question has to do with the, uh, so this is scheduled to be, uh, done at the end of December. Is that, is that right? So the next nine months, roughly speaking.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bill? Ron?
Um, yeah. Uh, thanks for coming Claudia. Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Are, are you guys members of the, um, what do they call it? The Consortium, the Continuum of Service Providers? Do you attend those meetings for, at the Champagne County Regional Planning Commission?
We actually, um, thank you for asking, asking that. Um, that's something that we've talked about a lot. And actually I have been working with Thomas Bates from the Regional Planning Commission. Um, because, um, I was trying to make a referral for somebody and then I realized that I cannot make that referral because I do not, we do not yet have the MOU for the, um, Continuum of Service Providers. So we actually just signed the MOU and we will be, um, in that mix and participating in meetings. And, you know, we've already, we've always been involved, you know, somewhat in housing, but very much more around the edges. And now it has just come much more to the forefront. So, um, we're diving in.
Okay, that sounds good. I mean, healthcare is definitely part of the housing picture. So it seems like you guys should be there. What else? Oh. Uh, shoot, forgot what else I was going to ask. Okay, I guess maybe I'll think of it before next week, but I think that was about it. Um, okay. Yep. Thanks.
Thank you.
Bill Colbrook?
Be willing to, uh, offer a motion? If, if the group is ready? Okay.
Certainly entertaining.
So resolution number twenty twenty one dash zero three dash zero one one R, resolution approving a city of Urbana Community Development Block Grant Program Agreement Champagne County Healthcare Consumers COVID nineteen assistance. I offer a motion to recommend this to go to city council for approval.
I, I would second that, but I wanted to know if we can put it on the consent agenda.
I was going to say the same thing. If, if this is, if this is unanimous, then to put this on the consent agenda.
We're going to motion for consent agenda approval. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mary Alice, motion made by Bill Colbrooks. Council discussion. Mr. Colbrook.
Is that me, Jared?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to say, I think this is an excellent, um, idea. Uh, it obviously bridges the gap between what is offered by, by other organizations and the need was identified. And, um, I just think it's, it's excellent. And thank you for bringing this to council.
Other council member discussion? All right. Uh, for the clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Sax?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes. And motion passes with a recommendation for approval in addition to the consent agenda. Right. Next up, we have item seven, resolution number twenty twenty one dash zero three dash zero one two R, resolution certifying U D Housing Development Organization for the Urbana Home Consortium First Followers. Sheila?
Jared, um, I'd like to ask that we talk about all three of the resolutions, um, if that's possible.
Sure. Okay. So this will, this discussion will also include item eight, item nine. Uh, resolution number twenty twenty one dash zero three dash zero one three R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an Urbana Home Consortium Community Housing Development Organization Agreement with First Followers. And, uh, resolution number twenty twenty one dash zero three dash zero fourteen R, a resolution proving and authorizing the execution of an Urbana Home Consortium Community Housing Development Organization agreements. We've got three difference, uh, certifying the organization and then two different agreements. Does that sound right, Sheila?
Yes, that's correct. Um, so the city of Urbana is a home consortium recipient of funding. We have to set aside fifteen percent of those fundings to be used to, for a community housing development organization. Um, and throughout time, we've had a variety of rental providers. Um, Habitat is, is currently one and they provide, um, homeownership opportunities. Um, and, and so, um, as other things have, as time has gone on and things have changed, um, we didn't really have a CHODO that could provide their rental opportunities. So we've been working with First Followers over the past four or five months to become a certified CHODO. So that once they're certified, then they would be eligible to apply for developer funds and operating funds to build their capacity. So that's what this, uh, funding application does. Um, they've requested twenty nine thousand nine hundred and ninety eight dollars, which will give them fourteen thousand nine hundred and ninety nine dollars per rental unit that they're, uh, in the process of rehabbing. And then, um, they've requested funding to help them build their capacity, uh, and, and help the organization grow. And so that's what this comes. This is in addition to the Welcome Home Program. So it's kind of separate. Um, but you, since we recently talked about them, I wanted to, to let you know that is, it is different. Um, I think this is a great opportunity for them. It's definitely something that our community needs, um, to have more affordable housing opportunities. And then First Followers is doing this similar to, um, a youth build or a habitat, uh, program where people involved in their program will be doing some of the rehabilitation work and doing some, you know, learning some, uh, job skills along with, you know, having a place to live. So staff recommends that, that council will move it forward with approval. Marla Mitchell is on the call, um, if you have any questions.
Marla, uh, before we take questions, do you want to add anything, uh, to this for us?
Yeah, I'd just like to say that this is a great opportunity for First Followers. Uh, Sheila, who I worked with in the past, uh, she and I got together maybe late last year in the fall. And so she started discussing some of this. And one of the things that came through, through our discussion was that to build internal capacity of our organization, which is very critical at this point in time, especially us being in a pandemic. But at the same time, I think this is a very unique opportunity for us because of two, maybe three things. One of, one, first and foremost, we get to, uh, collaborate with local property owners. That's the first thing. And the second thing I actually mentioned was the thing about, uh, us being able to provide workforce development. And the third, of course, is internal capacity, trying to move into sort of a sense of a model, sort of like Habitat Habitat for Humanity has been doing for years. So I just want to thank Sheila for the work that she's done, uh, the education and information that she's provided me and to move in this direction. So I think it's going to be great for not only our organization, but the city of Urbana, Champagne and other counties, I mean, other cities and townships around the county.
Thanks, Marla. All right. Uh, council members, questions for Roland or Sheila? Who else?
Um, thank you very much for bringing this forward. I wanted to know a little bit more about the rental units. You had mentioned that you were, you're working with some local landlords. So, uh, I'm curious how that works with the rehab of it. Sorry, how, how does it work to rehab something that's owned by somebody else?
So the way the CHODO works is, is it's twofold. We have to work with somebody, a, a property owner that's, uh, has a mission of low or affordable housing. And so the, the particular individual that we're working with, he has several units throughout Champagne and Urbana and Rantoul. And so he has a couple of units that have been vacant that he's trying to get back up inhabitable. And so that works for the workforce development for us to go in to rehab, renovate and just bring things back up to standard. At the same time, he has a commitment to the CHODO grant or the CHODO contract that says he has to make this, uh, these units affordable housing. he has to make this, these units affordable housing.
All right. And are these units in Urbana?
They're actually in the city of Champaign, close to the Urbana-Champaign line on six, three, and fifth street.
Because these are home funds, Mary Alice, it just has to be within the county. And then to tag on to what Marla was saying, the property owner and the CHODO First Followers is acting as a sponsor. So they actually have a legal agreement that their attorney and the property owner's attorney work together to, in order to meet the HUD guidelines and make sure that these remain affordable housing units for a minimum of five years.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions from council, Mr. Colbrook and then Dennis?
Yes, sir. I appreciate you coming to, to, coming to the hall tonight. And I watched years ago, First Followers make presentations to the community coalition and was, was letting the members of the, the community know what First Followers was all about. And I've noticed that, and you use this word, capacity. It appears you guys are building capacity. And I'm really proud of, of where you guys are today and the things you guys are involved in. Speaking of capacity, have you added volunteers and/or paid workers to your organization in order to, to facilitate a program like this?
Yeah, so First Followers began in two thousand and fifteen and it was just a mission with just volunteer labor. So we've over the, since about two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen, we've been able to turn some of those volunteers into paid staff or paid volunteers. There's only, we only have once paid staff member or employee full time, and that's myself. But at the same time, we, we've able to, I have about what we call peer mentors. I have about eight or nine peer mentors that's working with the organization and we do pay them a stipend, a monthly stipend. So yes, we have grown to this, to that extent. But what we're looking to do is, you know, with other grants and other funding that we're able to secure, we're able to, we're looking to bring more people onto paid staff. Position.
Thank you. And once again, I just really appreciate where you guys have come as an organization. I know a couple of people that initially presented way back in the day. I couldn't remember the year, but you know, two thousand and fifteen. I didn't know it was been that, that, that long ago, but, you know, people that I interacted with personally, professionally. And I just really appreciate where you guys are at today. So thank you.
Thank you.
Dennis?
Yeah. Yeah. Also, I had a question about the process that you're gonna go through in rehabbing the houses. You, you're indicating that one of the apartments is at five eleven, another is at six twelve Clark Street, no Columbia Street. And I think I remember in the memo, it said it was a five, five bedroom house and that you were going to make available to individuals a bedroom as a, as a residence for, for them to be established, reestablished themselves in housing. Does this mean that the entire house is available and that there are five possible units in the house which can be used for this purpose? Or are you managing this for a single, a single bedroom in the home and there are other uses or other tenants involved in the house?
So the initial conversation with the homeowner, the property owner, was to collaborate with the youth build program of Champaign County. And one of the things that they found with the youth build program is that they have individuals or participants in the youth build program who are home, housing insecure. And so one of the properties were gonna be used for the youth, the youth build participants, for those who are, you know, like I said, home housing insecure. So that there, we're, we're, we're just doing the rehab component of it. But the programming is coming from the side of the, the property owner and also the youth build program of housing, of the housing authority.
So it's gonna have multiple, multiple residents that are in need for housing at that location. Yeah. Okay. That sounds great. I really support it. I think it's a great idea. And I, now it's, it's even more interesting to me because there is a, a youth building component to it. I think that's gonna be really educational for those people. So thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks.
So I'd be willing to make a motion.
Go right ahead.
All right. I, I move that the City Council approve and move to the consent agenda. Resolution number twenty twenty-one dash oh three dash zero one two R, which is certifying a community housing development organization for the Urbana Home Consortium First Followers twenty twenty. Also, item number eight, Resolution number twenty twenty-one dash oh three dash zero one three R, which is a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an Urbana Home Consortium Community Housing Development Organization Agreement with First Followers as a CHODO operating in twenty twenty. And lastly, Resolution number twenty twenty-one dash oh zero three dash zero one four R, a resolution approving and authorizing the, the execution of an Urbana Home Consortium Community Housing Development Organization Agreement with First Followers as a CHODO developer for the year twenty twenty.
I'll second.
So was that a consent agenda is?
Yes.
A motion by Dennis and the second from Bill Brown for each of those three resolutions. Any council discussion? All right, not seeing any. With the clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Sacks?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Motion passes and those three items will be added to the consent agenda for next week. All right, moving on to item number ten, ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash oh three dash oh eleven, and ordinance of previous special use permit for seven oh one East Florida Avenue from Plan Case twenty-four fifteen dash twenty-one, Trinity Lutheran Church. Marcus is here to tell us about this.
Good evening, council. Thank you for entertaining this item. Elsa and Chuck Reeveschek are here on behalf of the applicants and will like to address council my presentation and questions. And I'm gonna turn off my video to stabilize my connection. And I'm gonna share my screen and give the presentation. Can you all see the screen? Okay. Okay, the, the church has operated at this site since nineteen fifty-four and desires to reconstruct its fellowship hall to address health and accessibility concerns. The special use permit would bring the church into legal conformity and allow it to reconstruct its fellowship hall and expand its parking lot. It's March fourth, twenty twenty-one meeting. The Plan Commission voted unanimously to forward the case to City Council with a recommendation to approve the request with conditions and staff concurs with this recommendation. Trinity Lutheran Church has operated at this location since nineteen fifty-four outside city limits in Champaign County when it constructed the original fellowship hall. Around nineteen sixty, the property, what, and neighboring properties were annexed into the city and with a zoning designation of R one, single and two family residential. At that time, churches were permitted in all, in all city residential zoning districts. In nineteen seventy-nine, the Urbana zoning ordinance was amended, separating the one, single and two family residential zoning district into three separate zoning districts. This amendment also made churches a special use in R one, R two, and R three zones. This shift from permitted use to special use allowed existing churches to continue to operate as legally non-conforming uses. However, they could not be expanded or have extraordinary repairs conducted or be reconstructed if damaged beyond a certain threshold. In order to expand, for example, to replace the fellowship hall, the church must be brought into legal conformity by obtaining a special use permit. The church campus is located on a zoning lot totaling almost two acres at the southeast corner of East Florida Avenue and South Anderson Street. The parking lot lies east of the buildings with a single access point on East Sunny Crest Drive here, where my cursor is floating. Wiley Elementary School lies to the north and the zoning for the area is R two for the site and to the east and south. R one, single family residential to the west. R three, single and two family to the northwest and northeast across Florida Avenue. And Wiley Elementary School is zoned conservation and recreation and education. The future land use of the area is residential except for Wiley Elementary School, which has a future and currently in use of institutional. The fellowship hall currently is split level and is accessed from the southeast side of the sanctuary. It is currently not fully accessible to people with mobility issues. The existing kitchen does not meet Champaign-Urbana Health, Public Health District standards. And the hall has become unusable due to general decay and the recent discovery of mold. The proposed fellowship hall would be a single story of approximately sixty-five hundred square feet and resolve the accessibility issue. On the site plans you see before you, the existing buildings are in gray. You can see the outline of the existing fellowship hall is in the dashed line and that would be demolished and the new addition is in the hatched area. The parking lot would approximately double in capacity to fifty-three spaces, which is the current minimum parking required for the existing two hundred and sixty-four seat sanctuary. No expansion of church activities is planned. On February eighteenth, church staff hosted a virtual neighborhood meeting via Zoom. Thirteen people attended, including five neighbors. Neighbors expressed concerns, including screening of the expanded parking lot, people using the parking lot as a cut through, dumpster screening and parking lot lighting. After the meeting, the design team made revisions to the site plan to address the neighbors' concerns. And this is the new, with the revised parking site plan. And the changes that were made, the significant ones were the addition of a landscape screen along the south side of the parking lot to screen the neighbors on the other side of Sunny Crest. And then also rotating the parking spaces on the east side so that they would not be head in to the neighbors to the east. The revised, this revised plan was then mailed to the original neighborhood recipients before the March fourth Plan Commission meeting. City staff received one favorable comment from a neighbor who had initially expressed concern regarding the proposal. And there were also no comments made at the March fourth Plan Commission meeting itself. The proposed special use permit meets the requirements for a special use permit discussed in the staff report. The granting of legal conformity to the existing church meets the criteria required for a special use permit. On March fourth, the Plan Commission held a public hearing on this case. Commissioners asked staff about parking, stormwater management, the plan review process and tree removal. There were no comments from the public at the Plan Commission hearing. David Keen, Church Building Committee Chair, commented that the exterior of the fellowship hall would be brick with large windows facing East Florida Avenue. Ms. Reeveschek will discuss details of the renderings in her presentation. Following discussion, the Plan Commission voted to forward the case to City Council with a recommendation to approve the request with four conditions. The proposed expansion would continue to be conducive to the public at this location where it has operated since nineteen fifty-four. The church is easily accessed by car, bicycle, mass transit, or walking. It would not be injurious or detrimental to the R two zoning district or to the general public as the building expansion is reasonable. And the parking lot expansion fulfills the minimum parking requirement for the existing church and would reduce on-street parking demand. It would also bring the existing legally non-conforming church into full conformity with, and the proposed expansion would conform to the regulations and standards of and preserve the essential character of the R two zoning district. The four conditions recommended by Plan Commission were that construction must be in general conformance with the attached site plan, that the existing four tax parcels should be combined into a single tax parcel. And then the following two recommendations have actually already been included into a revised site plan. And those were to install a pedestrian sidewalk along East Sunny Crest Drive and to restrict the Florida Avenue egress to right-in, right-out traffic. And those changes are shown on this updated version of the site plan. Here is the sidewalk along Sunny Crest. And this is a right-in, right-out access on Florida to reduce conflict points with entering and exiting traffic with traffic already on Florida. That is the end of my staff report and the Reevescheks are here to address council. Thank you.
Thank you, Marcus. All right. Do I have any questions from council members? Or either the Reevescheks or Marcus? Bill Brown and then Mary else?
I just wanted to say thanks to Marcus. I did go to, this is actually in my ward. Across the street is Jared's ward. But I did go to the community meeting before the Plan Commission. And I thought that the, I didn't have anything sent to me, but I thought what they showed was the head-end parking on the east side. So I'm glad that, I think that was one of the changes you converted the head-end parking that would have been right against the fence that was right on the neighbors', you know, just feet from their house, basically. To convert that to parallel parking. So I think that'll help eliminate light problems or something like that. There will be a fence there, but I know that was a concern. So I appreciate all the detail you've paid to this. And I think the, the church has been a really good neighbor. We've had community, neighborhood meetings there that I've attended a couple of times. So I think everybody really cooperated well on this and it looks pretty good to me.
Let's go. Mary, Mary else?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank the applicants for the careful consideration that they gave to the neighborhood by reaching out to them and also to modify based on some of the concerns. I, I think that that was very laudable. And so I'm in support of this. I'm willing to make a motion unless other people have, have questions.
Okay. Any other questions from council members for entertaining motion? Go ahead with the motion, Mary else.
All right, I move ordinance number twenty twenty-one, zero three, zero one, one, and ordinance approving a special use permit at seven oh one East Florida Avenue, Plan Case twenty-four fifteen S twenty-one for Trinity Lutheran Church to the consent agenda to the next city council.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second it.
Okay, that's a motion by Mary Alice, a second by Bill Colbrook.
Bill Brown, I was waiting for you, since it was your name.
You, I was too slow to my mute button.
Okay.
Any council discussion on this? Dennis and then Bill Colbrook.
It looks like a good plan and I just want to thank the church for honoring setbacks along the streets because I think setbacks are very important for the continuity of the community and allowing green space in front of buildings. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dennis. Bill?
Yeah, just a couple of things here. I think that are in favor. It obviously addresses the accessibility issues for the patrons of the church and other community members. It, it remedies the issues with the building. I think mold was, and, and other issues were, were mentioned. It saves the majority of the building, you know, what, you know, appears to be a church. I know there's some I know there's some demo that goes on, but, you know, apparently that, that part of the building, you know, they saw, you know, saw it best to, to demo, demo that part. And like Mary Alice said, it addressed the, the neighborhood concerns. They, it appears that they listened to the neighbors and were responsive to their concerns and whatever edits or solutions they came up with was amenable to, to the, to the residents. So I'll be in support of this.
Okay. Eric?
I also want to thank them for holding a community meeting at the beginning and then incorporating the concerns into their revised plan. I think this is an excellent example of, of how to do it. Well, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, well, please call, roll for vote.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Sax?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes. That motion passes, and that item will go forward to full council on the consent agenda's recommendation for approval. All right, we are on to item eleven, ordinance number twenty-two-one dash oh-three dash oh-one-two, and ordinance amending Schedule J of section twenty-three dash one-seventy-two of the Urbana Local Traffic Code, establishing curb loading zones on certain streets for Clark Street. Shannon is gonna lead us on this one. Take it.
Yep, this is actually my first traffic commission thing for quite a while, so I apologize, I'm a little rusty on the procedure. So the Gatherers, y'all aware, is a development on the corner of University and Lincoln, the southeast corner. Last year during the pandemic, they had approached us to put a loading zone in for their shuttle. The shuttle takes, you know, people who live there to, where they need to go, Carl, the university, the mall. And so the original plan, which, let me see if I can share a screen here real quick. This is from my presentation from Traffic Commission, so I apologize for PowerPoint here. They had originally planned it, come on, to be here where it says requested loading zone. Fire actually got back to me and said, we can't put it there because the fire suppression system is pretty much right here, and in the event of a fire call, they need to be able to get to it. So we went back to the developers of the Gatherer, and they came back with, this isn't the best picture, but moving it farther down Clark Street to the north side of the street. So we looked into it, and one of the things we said was, well, there's a city street light there, and those are the very old concrete light poles with the globes on top. And there's also big street trees they were trying to save. So they came back with a design that fit in between the light pole and the street trees. We lose no trees. Light pole doesn't have to relocate it. And so Traffic Commission approved this unanimously. It, it pulls anyone who needs a load, unload for the Gatherer out of the flow of traffic. So that way, it is safer actually for either the shuttle or say, you know, Uber driver or Jimmy John's because by, by rule, we don't have a entity-specific loading zone, so the Gatherer was made aware of this. It is, they'll put the signs as fifteen-minute loading zone. It's, you know, for anybody to use fifteen minutes. It fits their shuttle, they designed it, they're gonna build it, put in the signage. Not gonna cost the city anything, and so Traffic Commission had no problems with this. The engineering is good, and so I buy forth to community the whole for a vote, so.
Thank you, Shannon. Any questions from council members on this? Okay, not seeing any. I entertain a motion if there is one.
I can make a motion. Go ahead, Bill.
I make a motion for ordinance. Read this right, ordinance number twenty-two-one dash zero-three dash zero-one-two, an ordinance amending Schedule J of section twenty-three dash one-seventy-two of the Urbana Local Traffic Code, establishing curb, curb loading zones on certain streets, in this case Clark Street. And my motion also includes, this goes on the consent agenda.
And I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion to add to consent agenda, recognition for approval, and a second from Mary Alice, motion by Mr. Colbrook. Council discussion, Bill Brown.
Just a technical detail on the certificate of publication in pamphlet form, it still says, I Charlie, Charles A. Smythe. So need to just make a techno, technical correction for the new clerk there. Did, I, I had a question, I didn't get in time. Shannon, do you know if they have someplace in, in the interior around their parking lot or something where places like Amazon driver or, you know, delivery drivers, other delivery drivers? Because one space isn't really gonna be enough for all that.
I know of a place to park the shuttle, so like, one of our departments was they couldn't just park it in this loading zone, basically taking it up for themselves. However, for like Amazon, whatnot, that was never discussed. I mean, that was, I mean, this loading zone is for anyone, so like, you show up, you haul the move in, you can park there. You show up as an Amazon driver, you can park there. There's not that much space on that street, so I mean, between the trees and the light pole, that's pretty much as big as it's gonna get.
Yeah, okay, well, hopefully they have something closer to their mailboxes or whatever. I just didn't see it on that diagram. Okay, thanks.
Other council discussion, Dennis?
Yeah, my, my question was a little bit similar. Now that the loading zone has moved farther to the east, it seems to be not very convenient to the building entrances. Is that a concern for anybody? What you would, and what you have, it looks like it, it's, it's near the underground parking under the units, but not necessarily to entrance into the buildings. So that's the question.
Yeah, it was, this was, there was a lot of back and forth on this, and I understand your concern. But it was pretty much agreed upon by Fire and the developer when I brought them the concern that safety took precedence. So I mean, they did make sure to make this, this is ADA compliant, there's actually a connection from the city sidewalk to the loading zone to facilitate any kind of onboarding for people, you know, whether you're able-bodied or using mobility device. That was one of my concerns, was making sure it is accessible as well. And this is a very large building. So there's really no one place that's gonna be convenient to all of the residents, because it's so big. I mean, it's almost a city block long.
Yeah, I just, it, it looked like it was in a place where you would have to walk outside, perhaps in the rain or snow, to get to the shuttle.
We did originally try to see if there was somewhere on the actual site they could do their shuttle loading. That was one of our initial questions, and it came up at a review team meeting. Marcus was actually in that one too, and he really works developers to try and find somewhere to park the shuttle on the actual site, like under the covered parking, but where they're gonna store it is not conducive to actually boarding it, other than for the driver.
Okay, it just seems good and bad at the same time. That's all I'm saying. Okay, thank you.
Mary Als.
Yeah, I, I think this is a really good idea to, for large developments to be providing a loading zone for these types of things. I, I don't know if people have noticed what's been going on on Green Street, but it's obvious that people are using a lot of Ubers, a lot of different ways to get food delivered to them, and it's kind of a mess on Green Streets. I'm really happy to see this development offer a partial solution at least so that they're not blocking traffic. So I'm supportive of this one.
Great, any other discussion before we take a vote? Seen any hands raised? Sorry. Kirk, please call, roll for the vote.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Sax?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes. The motion passes, and that will also go to the consent agenda next week. All right, that will do it for our resolutions and ordinances, and we have three discussion items before council input in adjournments. The first of which is a one-door update in consideration of alternatives to leasing in the FY twenty-two budget, which I request to be added. Just for a little context, it's kind of a two-parter, the one-door update. You've heard this evening through public comment, and probably all of council saw my email, but I had a, ran into Lieutenant Joel Sanders on Valentine's Day. Well, I guess right around Valentine's Day last month at the wheelhouse in Spoy, and got to talking about what was going on with him, and he told me he had taken a police chief position in a town in Iowa. And first, that immediately made me think of one-door, and what was gonna happen with that? And he said he didn't really have a clear idea of what, where it was gonna go with that. And he was talking to the chief about, you know, making sure that something was done with it soon and, you know, trying to keep, keep the motion and the momentum going forward with it. So I thought, at that time, you know, it would be appropriate for us to get an update. I was hoping we were gonna just hear something in general, but we hadn't yet, so I added, added that for discussion. So the mayor could give us an update as to where that was, and after we talk about that, I'll talk about the other part.
Sure. As you know, Lieutenant Sanders just left within the last week to take his job in Iowa, and the appointment of Lieutenant Coker was made last week to replace him. So in the past couple of months, Chief Seraphin, Lieutenant Coker, and others have been working on this plan. If you recall, the original concept for one door was a comprehensive approach to dealing with persons experiencing mental health crisis or in other types of crisis. It involved behavioral component, behavioral health component with Rosecrans, involvement with Carl Emergency Department, see you at home as a shelter and actual place, that was where the door was to take people, and then, of course, the Urbana Police Department. We ran into some challenges, particularly with behavioral health end of things. And you also remember last year that the city council reallocated about seventy-five thousand dollars from the police department budget to help fund the social service component or the behavioral health component of that. That funding is still set aside and is still available. So what we've done in the interim, and this is largely planning in, in the police department, but also in conjunction with myself. The main difference is we're going to step back from the, going for the entire comprehensive model to start with, and we're going to phase it in. The big difference is we're partnering with the City of Champagne in, in a co-responsor, co-responder model for people in crisis. And that's actually a lot of advantages to that because many of the people that we deal with, especially the homeless or people in mental health crisis, people experiencing substance abuse crises, you know, they're, they, they're, they're frequently in both cities, and our police departments work very closely together in, in dealing with these issues. So we're planning a co-responder model with the City of Champagne involving the two police departments plus probably two to three, two social workers to start with. And that's what we'll be trying to get going fairly, fairly soon. And that will be, in my mind, the first step toward a larger component. We'll still be, we're still working with Rosecrans on this. Carl Hospital is still at the table. See You At Home is, is not part of this particular phase of this, of the plan, but could be back in, in the future. But in order to get something up, something, you know, operating sooner rather than later, we're going with this phased-in process. And I think being able to work with the City of Champagne is going to make a big difference as well, much more effective, effective response. So as far as the relationship to the budget goes, I just kind of, thirty thousand, thirty thousand-foot overview. If you, those of you who've been on council for a while, you know that we start working on budgets for the upcoming fiscal year right after the first of the year. So work has been underway internally on, on the budget since sometime in January. We actually got a little later start this year than before because of COVID. Departments currently are finishing up their own budgets this week for submittal. And then in our form of government, I deliver the budget to the city council, and that'll help happen on schedule in, in late May. So in, in the meantime, however, the staff, Carol Mitten and our finance HR director, Elizabeth Hannan, are scheduling meetings and have started meeting with council members, incoming council members, those of you who we know are returning next year. And a number of people who are, well, starting with those we know are returning next year. So we're meeting with incoming council members individually to give a sense of council members' priorities and interests. We'll also plan a council goal-setting sessions once the new council is seated, and this is going to be, I think, more comprehen, well, for sure, more comprehensive and more, well, different structure than what we did before. Don't know what that's gonna look like yet, but we're gonna get a, I think, a clearer sense and more definitive goals to work with coming out of that. So that'll happen after the council is seated. So as the plans for one door firm up and also our council goals are set, then we'll have also, that will also have an impact on the budget. We also expect, as do most, as do many cities and other forms of government, we'll be getting a share of the one-point-nine-trillion-dollar American Rescue Plan. Estimates at this point indicate that the City of Urbana should receive about twelve-point-five million dollars. We have general idea of the types of categories the money can be spent on. We're still waiting for the specific guidelines on how it can be spent and the restrictions attached to the money. And when you're talking about the federal government, there's plenty of both to deal with that. So we don't know yet those details. We'll get those from the Treasury Department and others. For that, for that pot of money, it's, it's, we do know we can use it to reimburse the city for COVID-related expenses, for lost revenue. And then we'll, we'll be looking at other uses as well. We're having internal meetings as far as, so I can get recommendations from various departments. I'll also be meeting with the township to talk about working together to identify priorities and needs. And then because many other units of government are also going to be getting local dollars, I, it really makes sense for us as a county, and certainly the different communities in the county, to look at leveraging that funding to really start to tackle some of the basic issues that face us. From my perspective, and I think from many other people's perspectives, one area that we can really focus on is housing, because we can leverage those dollars in many ways. We already, with the Housing Authority of Champaign County, we get money through CBVG, as you were talking about earlier. Many of our community partners are facing the same challenges with housing. We don't have a same-day emergency family shelter. So what has come through in the pandemic loud and clear, one of the big needs in our community is housing. And then that intersects many other issues that we're dealing with, including homelessness and crime and, and all that stuff. So, so we don't know yet how the the federal funds will be spent, but I certainly am gonna advocate for housing and, and for some of them. That money is going to be distributed to the cities in two tranches. The first will be available, they say, in fiscal year twenty-one, the second in fiscal year twenty-two, and it has to be spent by December thirty-first of twenty-twenty-four. So that gives us some time to be thoughtful about planning for the most effective use of these funds. What else? I guess that's it as far as I wanna talk about budget right now, but that's just kind of the broad overview of where we are as far as budgeting goes.
Thank you very much for the update in for that budgetary perspective. Questions for the mayor, Mary Als?
So you talked about see you at home is, is not, no longer gonna be a partner at this time and having two social workers. Are the two social workers gonna be housed at Rosecrans? Are they gonna be housed at the City of Urbana, the City of Champagne? What's the thought process there?
I'm, I don't have the details on that. I envision them probably at Rosecrans. Funding, and I will be, funding will come from a number of different sources, including us, but I suspect that they will be supervised and housed at Rosecrans, but available to the City of Urbana and to the City of Champagne, probably one for each city. supervised and housed at Rose Grant's, but available to, um, City of Urbana and to the City of Champagne, probably one for each city.
And I think originally the conversation had to do with, uh, the timeframe basically being during the day, I think till seven PM. Has there been any discussion in terms of the hours these social workers would be available? And you talked about the, um, co-responder model, and I really see kind of two components here. One is that initial response, but then the other one is the follow-up. So are these two social workers supposed to be doing both of those jobs?
The, no, the, the, the way it will start out, as I understand it, and again, this is in preliminary, um, um, planning phases, but the, the calls will still come into nine-one-one. There will be, the Urbana or Champagne Police Department would be responding, but then we would have follow-up caseworker, um, services for people that they, people that they help.
Is there any discussion in terms of timing?
Well, we all want it to be as soon as we can get it going.
Okay.
Uh, Eric.
What kind of specialized training are the police officers, uh, going to receive or already have received?
Well, many of our police officers already have crisis intervention training. So that is a very good basis to start. And Sergeant Coker actually is involved in, in that training as well. Um, and we'll see what else is needed after that. I would, I would see that there may be, um, if we need to set aside funds for more specialized training, that would be a reasonable expense, you know, in the upcoming budget.
There are questions for the mayor? Bill Brown?
Um, I just want to mention that the new state law does have a mandate for, uh, additional crisis intervention training. I think it's annual, so, um, and, and I don't think it's funded, so it's an unfunded mandate.
Yeah, there's a lot, there's a lot in the new state law that, um, will also have an impact on our, um, budget for sure. So.
Uh, Bill Corr.
Just a couple of comments, uh, to Bill Brown's point. Actually, the only law enforcement training standards board, they put a, they put a restriction on police officers and police departments as far as getting officers into CIT training. That is a very coveted, uh, training module that all police chiefs want their officers to go through uh, in these modern times. However, um, since everybody wants it and needs it, then the law enforcement training standards board actually kind of throttles who is allowed to be in there. And I believe you've got to have a minimum of two years on the job before you're even allowed to go in um, to that training. So a lot of these departments that, uh, are maybe seen as training grounds or otherwise have a lot of, uh, new officers. Um, you know, because once again, these new officers, they're working the, like a three-eleven shift, they're working a midnight shift. And these are the same officers that are responding to some of these calls, and they would love to be in that training, but they can't get in because there's a state agency that says they can't. And, um, also I just want to, uh, highlight the hard work that now Chief Joel Sanders has done on the One Door program. I just want to remind the public that this, this isn't something that just happened within the last year, two years. Uh, Joel was involved in this years ago, and this is, uh, mental health, um, for not only police officers, for the public, has been a passion of his. And, um, he tried to get this off the ground several years ago, and it just didn't get any traction. And then because of the way maybe the expectations of society, the expectations of the community, he thought, you know what, I'm going to try again. And it was Joel Sanders who got us to where we're at today, uh, along with a lot of other people, but he was absolutely the, um, driving force to get this thing up off the ground. And also just as far as like the funding, I, um, I know people are frustrated. I wish this was, you know, in place last year, uh, two years ago. Um, I just want to reassure the community that, that, yeah, I think we as a city, we as a council, we're, we're trying to get this done. Last year, we re-appropriated money from the police department and we were the sole funding source for One Door. Well, now because of a series of incidents, uh, it looks like that we were able to take a pause, take a step back. Now we've got a partner with Champagne because originally Champagne was not a partner, uh, but now it sounds like the Champagne is. So, you know, not only is the financial strain not just on Urbana, but it sounds like Champagne's going to be, um, you know, sharing those, those costs as well. And even though, you know, like the Kahoots program was mentioned, uh, if you look into the Kahoots program, uh, out in the Pacific Northwest, um, you know, they, they started small too, and, you know, and built their program. And even though the responder model probably isn't the, uh, the one that, that maybe we desire to have a, a call goes directly into a number, but it's going into the, you know, into MetCad, into nine-one-one. We've got to start someplace and we're starting here. I think this is an excellent, excellent start.
And something I've been learning, I'm also sitting on the MetCad, one of my other jobs is I sit on the MetCad Policy Board, and when we do start to transition to a different type of police response and policing model, um, it also is going to involve, um, changing the way we dispatch calls. And, um, it's not a simple, it's not a simple thing because we're changing the entire structure. Um, but we have to do it one step at a time. So we're starting smaller than we thought, but on the other hand, I think we're going to be more effective because we have a, uh, partner in this and I think we'll be able to build our comprehensive approach.
Thank you. All right. So the other, uh, flip side of this that I wanted to bring up and have council discuss, you know, uh, Mayor's, uh, brought up the thirty thousand foot perspective, then that's, uh, kind of what I rhyme at too, with thinking about, uh, what we're going to do and, you know, the, uh, government, uh, relief is going to be very welcome to the city. We're going to, I hope, have a very different financial outlook, uh, even despite the problems with the RPC and everything that we've projected, because that's a significant windfall for the city, even though it's not this money that goes into the general, general fund when we get this. Uh, so, you know, and I, I had a discussion with, uh, my, uh, replacement, James Cluzenberry, uh, last week, and that was kind of what spurred my wanting to share with you guys what he and I had discussed. And, you know, uh, I guess, uh, right, right now, only, uh, we know only for sure that one of the six of us that's in this room is going to be on council again, uh, going forward. Uh, so, you know, Mayor Oss, you've got your, got your hands full and possibly, uh, Bill Corr with two. With, uh, what, what we end up doing, because I, you know, Bill Brown, Eric and Dennis and myself won't be, will be here for the budget decision when, when it finally comes around for a point twenty-two. So, you know, I just wanted to offer perspective as we think about, you know, what we do. So here's, you know, here's the thing, and this is the thing that James, James and I talked about on Tuesdays. Like, you know, we dedicate the X amount of dollars that we have to, uh, what I would call, uh, a symptomatic treatment of crime and violence in the community. That symptomatic treatment is the police department. It's no illusion that the police don't prevent crime. They are a reaction to crime. Uh, they solve crime after the fact. Uh, they don't prevent crime, uh, and because of that, you know, and this has been the model that our society has used for, you know, for
Actually, Jared, Jared, I need to interrupt here. Um, they do prevent crimes. Our detectives.
They, they, this is what you, this is what you make my point.
They do, they do prevent crimes. Our detectives work very hard and much of what they do is crime prevention. Okay, there we go.
Oh, okay. Agree to disagree. Uh,
Well, that's the truth.
It's, that's your perspective. That's not the truth. Point being, crime doesn't just come from nowhere. Crime happens because people's needs are not being met. Crime happens because violence just happens to someone, and then they perpetrate that violence through some other means upon somebody, upon someone else. Crime happens because people don't have enough resources. Crime happens because people don't have good jobs and they don't have ways to make money. They don't have ways to get out of poverty. These are the things that cause crime. These are the things that cause violence. And when we think about what we have as resources, we have a compact, right, with everybody who lives in the City of Urbana to pay taxes to us, and they expect us to return services to them. That's the societal compact of municipal governments. We give taxes to them, they are going to provide a service to us that we want, and that, and we agree to do that. That's how we operate as a society. Well, huge portion of the money that we spend, even if some portion of it does go to crime prevention for police, we are not investing specifically in programs outside of smaller portions of the budget that go to solve the problems that create crime in a significant manner, not in the way in which we spend on police. And I think that a lot of people, you know, when people think about police abolition and, uh, you know, when people say who funded the police, it's not because people think that, you know, we just want to live in an anarchistic, chaotic world and, you know, that there just shouldn't be any rules and people should run them up. It's because people think that if we use our resources to invest in the things that cause people to commit crimes and to cause violence in the first place, you're much more likely to, uh, reduce having those things be around in your, in your community. So, you know, this, uh, idea of this is that, you know, I just want people to think about that when we think about what we're committing to with our funds as a city. Uh, Bill Corr.
I'm actually going to agree with the mayor and I'm going to agree with you, Jared. Um, I think both points are valid. Um, I, I've said for years and, um, and, you know, I, I appreciate your opinion, uh, but I've got one too. But mine's rooted in thirty-five years of doing the job, thirty-five years of interacting with the public, thirty-five years of talking to people. Um, thirty-five years of the opportunity of coming up, of people coming up to me, people that I've arrested or people that, uh, maybe subordinates of mine, you know, troopers of mine, police officers of mine who've come up to me and said, hey, thank you. You, you did me a favor by arresting me because now I'm on a different path. You know, maybe it was a, um, a teenager or a younger student, uh, at the college who because of an interaction with us came up to us and said, hey, you know, I, I now see the way. Uh, it's this, you know, it's, it's not all rainbows and unicorns, I understand that, but I would absolutely push back wholeheartedly because I've got personal and professional experience, a career of doing this, and I know for a fact that police officers prevent crime. Um, now, it's, um, it's almost like, you know, nail and jello to a wall. It's a little bit tough to define, but I can guarantee you because of all the anecdotal evidence that police officers do prevent crime. However, what you said is absolutely a hundred percent true. The, the root causes, the foundational causes, mental illness, homelessness, homelessness, food insecurity, lack of job skills, a drug addiction, uh, any addiction, all of those things are foundational root causes to crime. And I absolutely believe, and I've been saying this for years, uh, you know, I've been to the, the Tenley Park Mental Health Facility. If nobody's been up there, you probably ought to take the hour and a half trip up there to look at it. That was once a, a sprawling, vibrant campus that the state of Illinois, uh, supported that there was, there was, you know, our fellow citizens, the people that are most vulnerable, the people that were in need, were at that facility getting help. It's now shuttered, it's been shuttered for years. The weeds are so tall, they're as tall as trees. It's pathetic. It's sad to see what, what society, whether it's on the, on the federal level or the state levels, or the government, you know, the, the local level, whether it be county or city, you know, the fact that we have made conscious decisions over the years. And this, this kind of started back in the sixties and really kind of, you know, built up steam in the eighties. We made budgetary decisions to say, no, we're going to, we're going to put our public dollars over here and not over here. And, and, and we took away money for social programs. We took away money for mental health, um, um, you know, issues, and that's sad. And, and I think it's, it's, it's high time. I think, I think society and especially Urbana, and, and I'll be at, at the front, you know, um, beating that drum, we, we need to put more money into preventative programs that, that keep people healthy, keep people safe and keep people out of jail and keep them out of the morgue. I absolutely a hundred percent agree with that. The problem is, is there's only so much money. You know, we, we can, we can only slice that plot, that pie so much. Um, you know, the, the, uh, insinuation that Urbana Police Department is overfunded is an absolute fallacy. They're not. Uh, we were given a document last year, there's only one police agency in the entire region that has, uh, less officers per capita than Urbana, and I believe it was Mattoon, which tells us that per capita, or that we, we've got a, we've got a, such, such a small police department for our size compared to other cities, whether it be Champagne, uh, Bloomington, Normal, Peoria, Springfield, you know, the, the compares, the, the comparables. We're, we're not, uh, you know, funding the, the police department to, to an excess or to gluttony. The, the budget is there to support the, the officers and the equipment and the programs that are currently there. And I, you know, with all due respect, Jared, you know, you started last year's, um, a discussion of fifty percent defunding of the police. That's an absolute non-starter for me. Uh, I appreciate the offer, but, but it just, it would never work because there would be nothing in response. You have to have something to stand up if you're going to defund the police by fifty percent, even twenty percent, even fifteen percent. Um, you know, we need to find a way and, and all great problems don't have, you know, don't have easy solutions. But we need as, as, as a city, find a way to come up with additional funds for these other programs, but not to the parallel of the police department, because I can guarantee you the police department needs every penny that they're getting. So I agree with both of you.
Thank you, Bill. Other council member thoughts? Mayor Oss and then Dennis and then Bill Brown.
Um, so, uh, I, Bill, I think you, you left out a, a big one, which is substance abuse. Um, I, I don't think that we can ignore the impact of opioids in our, in our community or other.
I did say addiction. Yeah.
Oh, did you? Sorry, sorry.
I, I started, I, I think I started with alcohol, but I, I said all addiction. So.
I mean, I, I think that this one here, I know that, um, we've had conversations with Danielle Township in terms of substance abuse, uh, assistance, where to put people. It just is very lacking in this community. Uh, when, when we first started talking about the police budget, um, we talked about public safety. There was a conversation about having a task force set up, and, and I know that the mayor sent us, you know, questions in terms of what do we want to see? What do we want this task force to do? And one of the things that I, I said, um, it didn't get included, that's okay. Um, is that it's, it's a patchwork. Uh, there are so many different entities within our community that are prior, you know, providing all these different kinds of services. And it's, frankly, it's a mess. And, and I don't want to say that, uh, in, in, in regards to any of the non-for-profits that have stood up a lot of services because they've seen the gaps in our system. You know, First Followers is a really good program, and they've seen the gap in terms of not being able to help people come when they get out of jail. Um, you know, tonight we had an example of the, uh, Champagne County healthcare providers seeing a gap. Um, and, and really one of the things that I would like to see is I would like for us to map out where are all these services? Where is all this funding coming from? We have six million dollars that the county collects for mental health, six million dollars that they are giving grants to, uh, all, all of our community. Um, that comes through the county. So I, I really feel like before we start plugging holes, we have to have the landscape. What, what does this look like? Um, because it's, it, it frankly, it's just a mess. Um, and, and as I, I just want to reiterate, it's not a mess in terms of where people are providing stuff. It's a mess because it's hard for people to get access to those resources, hard to know where you turn to. Um, and, uh, the only way I know how to start that conversation is, is a map to figure out what we've got already in place.
Thanks, Mayor. Dennis, you're next.
Okay, so, uh, I'd like to, like, put a little bit of focus on one thing, one aspect of, um, public assistance and, uh, that we haven't really talked about yet very much, and that is, um, workforce training for youth. One of the big questions that has come up, uh, peripherally to this discussion is, besides housing and mental health and substance abuse and all that, is job creation for young people and training for opportunities for young people. Um, so, uh, when we had a conversation about, um, uh, pedestrian master plan back in December, I was very interested and I was rather, um, I was thinking about it in a creative way, and I thought one of the things that we could do as a community is to put people to work, youth from the high school to, uh, rebuild the brick sidewalks, which are considered to be a walking hazard by the, by the BPAC. And BPAC would like to replace sidewalks with cement, but I believe that if they're relayed properly, they could become, again, the appropriate But I believe that if they're relayed properly, they could become again the appropriate walking surfaces that we've had and enjoyed in our community. I brought the idea to the Regional Planning Commission because I know that they focus on work. Youth Work Opportunity Training Programs. They found that the idea of working with the community to give masonry training for creating new, to repair. Um deteriorating sidewalks in in the city would be a very useful project for a community to do. And they pointed out that there was funding available through the workforce, WIOA workforce. Uh true uh Innovation and Opportunity Act to train young people. To uh meet meet the uh jo- new job opportunities in construction. And even though, even though most construction masonry projects relate to walls, that they could see that. That sidewalks would also be a training opportunity. And I coordinated with the local Bricklayers Union to provide of uh for a trainer to come up from Springfield, Illinois. To teach a class here locally. We found that the Cunningham Children's Home was uh willing to to look. To house the training facility as a classroom because they're expanding their outreach. Program in the community and it would, it aligned with their interests. So we have the opportunity sometime this year or the next year to hire ten to twelve young people from the high school. Learn how to relay a brick sidewalk appropriately. Become certified and possibly enter the Bricklayers Union as the offset. For taking this out, taking this training for one week. And it's being supported by the local Bricklayers Union. So what we have now is that certain, certain restrictions or concerns have have come up. Really from the city itself relating to um safety issues, insurance, liability issues. And also even allocation of staff time to be, to consider. Uh pulling up a si- a brick sidewalk in the community, which would probably take one afternoon. So I'm really encouraging this, those who work on trying to solve community problems for the future. To remember that it's possible to create youth training programs in our community. And if they come up and if they're being offered to the community and that we even have funding associated. Um with them that can be from this, from the federal level through the WIOA program. That we should not set up barriers. Uh the city should not have set up barriers that make it more difficult for for a program like this to be established. But should work with the RPC and whatever our agency comes forward with this to try to facilitate it. And it would be one of the great goals for the next comprehensive plan and possibly for funding. Because perhaps we could use some of the funding that's coming from these grant, these grant monies to address maybe city staff time. To make a prob- a project like this possible. So I think, I think thinking about youth training provides jobs, provides future. Which can have an impact on what we call um young, you know, young involved crime in our community. And I'm a real advocate for it.
Thanks, Dennis. Uh Bill Brown, you're next.
Um yeah, I think I wanted to kind of latch on to what Mary Alice was talking about. There's a lot out there that's going on and this is. Priority for a lot of agencies, park district, school district, mental health board. I think part of the key is trying to figure out where to leverage our dollars and. You know, the federal government is the biggest anti-poverty program in the county between um the tax. Tax rebates and tax uh programs and the new incentive payments and the new. New child tax credit and everything. It's supposed to be one of the biggest poverty um programs in quite a while. So. Things like that will help. We want, we need to strategically make sure that the people in Urbana who qualify for those. Get what they deserve and get everything they deserve. And I think that, you know, that'll go a long ways if we can strategically allocate. Through the township and through the city, um resources to make sure that everybody gets the benefits that they're due. But I do think it's a a big question of resources and responsibility, which um. Which government entities, nonprofit entities are best equipped to handle um different aspects of it? That's one of the reasons why we have our social service funding, um is to try to leverage the nonprofits like we do. I know recently, the past three or four years, it's gone mostly to um to homelessness. Um and housing providers and prevent homelessness. But we have funded neighborhood connections uh for workforce development. First Followers and a lot of other, we used to, we we also provide emergency funding when the, when the um school splash program, the after-school program. Um ran out from a federal grant, we covered that for a while. So I think continuing to do that and making sure that um. We have enough allocated to do, do that sort of thing is a, is a big first step. But I don't think it's realistic to expect the city to do everything or to take half of our police budget. Because, you know, that's, that's one of our primary responsibilities, police and fire. Um this, the the school district has their responsibilities, so. You know, I think it'd be great if we could do more. Um I think leveraging the money um and and. From other sources is probably the strategic way to go.
Yeah.
I think that's absolutely right. And one thing we've learned through the past year and one thing which we've strengthened through the past year is our community. Collaborations, so the network of um, the network that and uh channels of communication and collaboration that we've. Built over the past year with local governments, social service agencies, the business community, the university. Um the healthcare system, public health district have all. You know, we 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 shouldn't lose the momentum that has developed. And that's the group that we can also use to tackle these big county-wide programs. The county should get about forty one million dollars from this um American Cares Act. Uh the list I saw had the city of Champagne twenty five or twenty six million. Um so you know, there's a significant amount of dollars coming to the community. There's a lot of expenses associated here, but. But it's that um network of support that we've built is what we should be utilizing to tackle these. These programs. The city can't do it. We cannot do it on our own. We're too small. But we can be part of this bigger effort and make sure we're using the dollars that we have most effectively. And focused, you know, focused on a couple of fundamental issues and really move the, you know, move the needle on them. And that's why we're meeting, you know, we're starting with internally, meeting with the township and then the um. Uh other service providers.
Eric, never heard from you yet.
So I, you know, I agree with Bill that there are many different root causes of crime. Uh sometimes they're intertwined. But it'd be really helpful, you know, getting back to what Mary Alice was saying is all we have this piecemeal. Uh set of solutions and as Bill and the mayor have stated, we need to interact with collaborate in order to solve them. What we really need is a high-level look at statistics of what percentage of the crime that we observe in our area. Is associated with these different root causes. And with that kind of information, you can then prioritize. How you're gonna spend your dollars to to solve the problem most effectively, or at least as much as possible with the resources available. I would suspect that mental health is a very large component of that. Uh from what I've read nationally, that tends to be uh true. Do we have any statistics about that locally?
Mary Alice, you're nodding your head.
Yeah, one thing I was working on was I I pulled the data from the the portal to figure out exactly what the calls for service were. I I don't have anything concrete yet, but I was, I was going through and classifying things to figure out exactly like. Well, for example, traffic offenses is a big one out there. Um but and it, so. When, once I have that done, I'll share it with city council, I, you know, and and probably Melissa to see if I crunch the numbers correctly, but. I think that's a good place to start. And I think you're right, Eric, uh in terms of looking at, look at the distribution of where our calls for service are coming from and. Whether or not we think mental health responses would be, you know, adequate or appropriate, rather, um to respond to them. There's a. Checks, right? Mental uh mental health checks where police go in if there's a call that somebody's concerned about their neighbor. Um there are those. There is, there's just a a very um diverse uh number of types of calls for service. I mean, to the point where it's like point six percent here and it's just, I, as I said, I think traffic offenses is like. One of the number one things that our police respond to.
Well, that's a lot lower this year. I think uh chief was saying there's been thirty traffic stops in the last two to three months. Um so, yeah, significantly lower.
So.
I think the the data you had, Mary Alice, I believe was for twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, twenty eighteen, so there's.
I just, I downloaded all the stuff from the open portal, so it goes to twenty twenty.
Okay, all right, well, good, yeah. Well, that's, that actually is the point, is that. Twenty five thousand calls for service approximately per year and the police get called for everything. You know, from from wellness checks to stray animals, to to noise complaints, to um. You know, gun violence and and um very, very serious crimes. And. That is exactly what we need to be looking at. Who can best respond to those calls and who's better equipped to?
Oh, I will, uh I just want to make a couple of points to uh Bill, because you made me think of something. Uh that I I I meant to mention, I didn't get around to, you know, I'm. I'm not disagreeing that there is, that that it's possible for there to be positive interactions with the police. All right, it, you know, I I I portray a very negative picture and a very negative light all the time. Uh of the police because I'm being hypercritical because, you know, our, our, our time together is limited and, you know. I have to make points succinctly and to, you know, my, my point is 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 effectively and quickly as I can. But, you know, here's something that I would challenge you to think of, you know, and this is something I've said to a lot of people who hate your, your, your position on. On the police, you know, we, you know, and this is the, this is the entire thing of it, it's right? You know, we have twenty five thousand calls for service and point oh five percent of them involve violence, right? The uh, you know, on the police's behalf to solve a situation, right? So is it also not the truth that those ninety nine point nine five percent of calls that didn't involve the police. Could have been done without a gun, right? Why do they require armed response for all of those instances that don't require violence to solve a situation? They involve a conversation. They involve just interacting with people in a way to try and help figure out what their problems are. And I understand, yes, the threat of violence is ever looming. It is, it is always there, but. So is it for every other person who's walking the streets, talking and interacting with, with their citizens. Their fellow neighbors and everyone else that we run into. We don't all carry weapons because we don't all want to live in a society where we walk around. Fearful that everyone and everybody is going to hurt us everywhere we go. I don't live my life that way. And I, and I don't want to live in a society where we treat each other like that. And I think the police, of all people, should be, you know, beacons for somebody you could immediately go to and expect to see. Civil, nonviolent response. And part of that, because of the way that things happen in our culture, is that now people don't see the police that way. People see the police as symbols of violence. They see the weapons, they see the mace, they see the firearms. They see all these things that they, that this person is carrying around with them that are for their protection. But are also, you know, the threat of violence to somebody who's just out there on the streets. If you, you know, you, I hope you understand what I'm getting at. The question that we always. The question that I always am challenging people to think about is could it have been done without a gun? Could it have been done without the threat of violence in order to solve the situation? Because that's ultimately what we're getting at, we're trying to break cycles of violence. Uh Bill, go, go ahead.
Once again, I appreciate your comments, um but but one of the things that you said is it's unpredictable. There's always a threat of violence. Uh I can tell you stories um that I personally experienced in my career where, and I've mentioned this before in council. I did not know what the next five seconds of my life was gonna be like. That sounds very dramatic, but it's very true. I can recall an incident on a sunny Sunday morning, whenever I went to uh respond to a motor assist. On I fifty five between Lexington and Chinoa. All it was, was to me, three or four teenage kids that broke down. Before I knew it, I had three or four teenage kids trying to encircle me. And in interviews later on, they said they were gonna kill me. There had been a group of teenagers that came out of Indianapolis. They went to Peoria and they stole about four or five cars that night. Either the cars wrecked or they were stopped. There was one remaining. That's the one I found. So here I am on a Sunday morning, minding my own business. I was sent north to around Pontiac. For a motor assist, first thing on my shift at seven AM, elderly couple. By the time I got all the way up there, they were gone. But I'd seen this car on the southbound side. So I picked up the microphone and said, hey, this is what I saw, I'm gonna go back, I'm gonna check them out. My life almost ended that day. That's why police officers carry guns. I pulled my gun that day. And I backed up and I used my command voice. And I was able to keep them at bay until another officer got there and we put them in custody. I completely appreciate your position, but please appreciate mine.
Man.
This, here's an experience that our Urbana officers had a couple of weeks ago. They uh responded to a a call for service. A person was experiencing a a mental health crisis. They um de-escalated, they successfully got him to OSF where he was. Taken to the emergency room. It's also where the um, the mental health uh floor is. He was released and then the officers left because at this point. It's either, that's where you take someone who needs help or they end up in jail if they've committed a crime, but they, they were able to get this individual to the emergency department. He ended up being released several hours later. He, he went to Champaign. He um sometime between the time he got out of the hospital and was picked up again in Champaign. He was wielding a machete or a a bladed, he was wielding, wielding a big bladed weapon. In the middle, I think it was Fourth Street and University where he was picked up again. Successfully de-escalated. It took a longer time that time because he was, he had a weapon. Very, very dangerous weapon. And this time he was taken back to the hospital and admitted and kept, but. It it's exactly that. You do not know what you're going to encounter from one minute to the next. And and. And that's the reality. And in both times, the individual was not hurt, he was successfully handled, but. The officers experienced, you know, they were facing danger. And that happens all the time.
But it doesn't happen.
It does happen. It does happen.
Jared, I'm gonna tell you one more war story. I've got lots more and you can go to my house and we can drink tea and I'll tell you all of them, okay?
I've I've heard a ton. I got a, I got an uncle who was a police officer, Vietnam vet, and he was a police officer for twenty five years, man. I've heard, I've heard them all, Bill. But the point, the point I'm trying to make is, I, you know, this isn't not about anecdotal, you know, here's something terrible that happened. I'm not trying to say that those situations won't happen, but if you come to every interaction. With the presupposition of of violence and you presume that violence may be possible and that's why you're prepared for violence. You show up prepared for violence. It it makes people uncomfortable and.
You don't, you don't understand. You don't, you don't understand the mindset, Jared. No, no, you, 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 you're not a cop, you've never been a cop, you don't understand the mindset. Police officers go for peace. Are they prepared for a fight? Absolutely, they're trained for a fight if, if a fight comes to them. But I guarantee you, you've got it completely backwards. Police officers are peaceful. They want peace. They, 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 your, your whole theory is they're coming to, to every interaction looking for a fight. And that's a hundred percent not true. Unequivocally not true.
It, it, it's not that they're coming prepared for the fight. It's that they're, but I'm not saying they're coming looking for a fight. They're coming prepared for a fight. And there's, there's a difference. I'm not, I'm not saying officers are looking, coming and looking for violence. I don't think anybody wants that. Unless you have some kind of severe trauma in your life that is causing you to want to cause violence to others, then I don't think anybody, a person in a situation with another human being is like, well, I'm just going to hurt this person. That's, I, I don't think that that's what they want. But this is, this is what is part of like the issue of breaking the mindset of how we use violence, state sanctioned violence to respond to all kinds of need. There is so much need that doesn't need even to have the, like, preparation of violence to be responded to. That's all, that, that, that's all I'm trying to get at.
I'm going to go back to you and say, I agree with you from your original premise that we need to work on foundational issues. We're going to agree on that tonight, Jared.
Sure. Alright, well, I, we, we don't need to go on it, uh, in further, because we do have a couple of other discussion items. I just wanted to plant that seed in your heads, uh, you know, thinking about using the budget as, uh, fighting it in causes. That's the primary premise of it. It's great discussion, thanks, thanks. Alright, so next up we have a discussion item for, uh, city Urbana use, or, sorry, appointments, boards and commissions and some staff positions. Alright, so, uh, I had sense, I hope everyone had a chance to read it, uh, a little two pager on, uh, this issue, something that has come up. It's an issue that I've talked about a couple of times, but hadn't really gotten into, uh, the detail of it. For the public who are not, uh, not, because I wasn't able to prepare this to get included in the, you know, council agenda, I basically am proposing that the city needs to update, uh, processes for appointments, boards and commissions and city staff positions. Our current city code is from nineteen seventy-five and it is the overriding language that we use, uh, for most, uh, of those things. We do have some newer updates, uh, there is some clearer language in some of them, the vast majority are coming out of the nineteen seventy. Uh, so, uh, for general reference, uh, to the public of how that basically, how this basically works is in our automatic form of governments, uh, and this is also true in the federal government, we share the power of appointments with mayor, city councils. Uh, and our state's legislature has offered language that pretty much directly reflects the language of the US Constitution that allows the US Senate to share the power of the appointments of, uh, the executive branch of government with, uh, the President of the United States. So what that really, what that really means is, uh, you know, in, if anybody wants to look at the statute, sixty-five I L C S five, the appointed officers and municipalities, uh, section of the, uh, state legislative code. In section three point one, S thirty, S five, uh, which is, uh, subject to name states of the mayor or president, as the case may be. And with the advice and consent of the civic council or board of trustees may appoint, and that's why I see people, uh, to that. Key phrasing in there is buy in with the advice and consent of. So that is the literal same phrasing that is used in, uh, the US Constitution, describing how the senate shares that power with, uh, shared that power with, uh, the executive branch of government to appoint people, uh, to executive departments. So, uh, you know, I'm not going to go too, too deep into the history of that, people can look that up, uh, my history, but just. So we have a few issues, uh, that I can see, uh, in our code. One of which, like I mentioned, uh, the city code is from nineteen seventy-five, hasn't been looked at in a long time. Probably could be used, uh, could use an update like a lot of things. I know we, city has a lot of issues on there, this is just another, another thing that I thought, uh, was worth, uh, putting together. So, um, another one is, and this is something the mayor brought up when I brought this up, is that we have annual reappointments, uh, for most officers. Uh, I think all of them right now. Uh, and the mayor made the point that, you know, that's not really a good position to put people in who are looking for, you know, Phil Mitten's position, for example, the city administrator, that's a career job, that's a big job. You don't expect to, that you were going to take that job and then lose it in a year possibly. So, you know, I, I would totally agree that, uh, certainly we could allow for, uh, longer appointments, uh, when, when necessary. I, I don't think that reappointments every year are necessary for every single position. What I'm calling non, non-controversial positions or non-at-issue positions. Uh, so that's another issue. A third issue is, uh, that if you look at each one of the officer positions, the language varies, uh, between them. Some of them take some language, some of them have no language at all about, uh, the appointment of them. Uh, so it's presumed that they derive from the other authority, there's a mismatch. There's a lot of different stuff in there, it could certainly stand to be cleaned up and we could have, uh, something that pertains to all those positions that there does. Uh, and then that's also the, the fourth issue, you know, that language is, uh, also not clear about what exactly council's role is. You know, we have this state statute that kind of illustrates what the role is with the, uh, you know, advice and consents, uh, we have that in part of, uh, our code, but it's not written everywhere. But it's also not explaining what exactly that means and how exactly that defines the process. So it's there, but we've kind of just been, you know, going through this process without really, uh, clearly flushing everything out and creating a real process for doing, for doing these appointments. You know, the appointments right now will just kind of show up on meetings and we get a little blurb. If they're more important, so obviously we, we usually meet with, uh, meet with folks sometimes extensively before they come forward for an appointment, uh, but, you know, I, I feel like establishing some, uh, some ground rules would be a really good, uh, idea, uh, going forward. And it'll also help folks on the new council understand how that system works. So, uh, I also put down a pretty extensive list of, uh, possible ways to go forward. I'm not going to read them all out right now, uh, because I'm hoping that all of you have had a chance to read that list, uh, with possible ideas and things we could do to fix some of these issues. I'll just do the bullet point, big parts, uh. You know, going off that last one, I think that there is a need for, uh, public documentation, uh, and, uh, official determination amongst ourselves and the mayor of which positions just actually officially apply to. And that would be part of like rewriting ordinance that would say X, Y, Z positions are illuminated in this. It's kind of in there now, but it's, you know, the, the language is not fine. So cleaning that up, putting those things in there. Uh, another thing that we could do is, uh, consider, consider adding or eliminating those yearly reappointments in lieu of agreements or terms of appointments, uh, just like we do boards and commissions, uh, when we, when we agree to them. You know, and we can set those as a standard across the board. We can choose to do them individually, which goes to the, uh, third point. And that was, uh, if we want to consider what I would call at-issue, uh, appointments differently and use a different process for those, I think that would be wise of us to do so. I don't think that every appointment is exactly the same, uh, but some are certainly not as controversial or not what, ones that I would consider at-issue. I kind of listed some examples of that. Ones that I would consider like non-controversial, fire chief, uh, finance and the ATR director. Ones I would consider at-issue, uh, foyer officer, city attorney, uh, city administrator, those are more important. They probably deserve a little more in-depth look, need a little more information from them. I would, I would like to, if we were going to consider rewriting that ordinance, consider making two categories and making two processes for each. Don't know if everybody would agree with that, that's just my idea. Alright, and then the last, uh, the last thing that I was, uh, considering was, uh, that we would no longer receive, generally speaking, as a, as a ground rule for appointments, that appointments would not disappear on a given agenda with a single vote. They usually didn't show up at city council, uh, agendas and we don't, we may, you know, we've got three days to figure out whatever we can about whoever's coming on, uh, who's going to be appointed. You know, we get the memo on Thursday and you've got the weekend to find out whatever you can about that person. For pretty much any appointment that's coming on, it's got to be way, uh, you know, it's got to be a position of some importance. We're going to be coming before council in the first place. Three days is not, in my mind, enough time to, to really, uh, consider, you know, somebody's, uh, you know, relevance to a position and if they're qualified to ask them questions, to give them an opportunity to come before council. If a council, you know, wants to be like, hey, could we ask this person if they can be here next Monday? You know, because by the time Thursday rolled around, anybody, any of us who have busy professional lives, I don't have time to make that appointment now. Like, you know, my Monday's already set. So I think that we should see appointments, or at least them announced, at the very least, if they're non-at-issue, uh, appointments, uh, on a committee of the whole. They don't have to be discussed, they don't have to be, you know, it doesn't have to be a thing, it just needs to be announced. It needs to be, hey, uh, you know, at the next city council meeting, we're going to bring X, Y, and Z people forward. Here's our, the tape for them, here's our information about them. And then we, you know, if that announcement is coming with that committee meeting that will happen on Thursday, it gives us ten days, uh, between that Thursday, that committee, the whole meeting and the actual city council meeting to find out whatever, you know, find out more information about them, ask questions, request their presence, do all of those things so it doesn't just happen in the meeting. Uh, so yeah, those are my, those were my ideas, uh, about how we could fix that policy. I would appreciate feedback and thoughts from folks on those ideas. Dennis?
Um, that's very comprehensive, uh, I really appreciate it, Jared. A very interesting topic. I think it, it requires, uh, some consideration by us, indeed. I think you have a, a useful thing to, uh, consider that some appointments are more important than others and some of them would be probably non-controversial. Uh, and others might be, uh, set aside for more scrutiny. And I think that, um, it does create, uh, career, um, security. If you have a job which is satisfactory to the mayor and to the city council, that, that serving for a three, a three-year term could be a consideration. Realizing that at any time, the, the mayor or council or counselors could bring up, um, questions about suitability of an individual appointment and perhaps have the ability to terminate it, you know, and not have to wait the three years out. Um, and I think that your last suggestion that, uh, that significant positions or new hires should first come before the committee of the whole and not be just brought to us to be ratified three days later at the next city council meeting after we get the agenda and the names is a more appropriate way of doing things. It's just as important to review significant staff hires, um, as it is to, uh, look at plan and commission meeting results, uh, before they come directly to the city council. So I think that these things have some merit and I appreciate your bringing them forward. You know, you could even, you could even say that, uh, individual appointments to commissions are important too, because on some commissions, you know, like, like the planning commission or the design review commission, if you have a preponderance of people who don't have any training in particular in the topic, that is, is, uh, the commission's duty to review, then, uh, perhaps there are, perhaps that person will not serve the, the community in a way that we would hope they would. There, there's another issue that comes up. And I think that, that if a chairman of a commission has been serving for up to six years, it might be time to have an automatic review of whether the position needs to be passed on to another individual, partly for the experience and training and also partly because there might be a repeating, uh, series of, uh, of, of procedures at the commission that, uh, results in, in simply rubber stamping anything that's coming before the commission. It would, and perhaps it might be the, it might be the fact that there are, that the chair of the commission is not allowing free discussion or bringing up new, new criteria or new issues for consideration. So if, if in a commission, you, all you can get is things, all, all that can be brought up are issues that are created by staff, you're not necessarily being open to creative ideas that are coming from commissioners themselves. And they may not be encouraged to bring up alternative ideas or programs because of the lack of, um, support from staff generally. So I'm, I'm really concerned about commissions that have been, ended up being just rubber stamped commissions. I think we see that sometimes, uh, as a feature and I think sometimes it's because, um, maybe the chair needs to rotate more often among the commissioners.
Thank, thanks, Dennis. Uh, Bill, go ahead.
A couple of things. I think, um, there's probably some merit to maybe doing some cleanup, um, giving a little bit more guidance, uh, whatever the procedures are. You know, maybe, uh, clean up some of the, uh, the writing. But, you know, I, well, let me get to my last point. My next point is, you've met now, you've now mentioned twice that the fire chief is not as controversial as other appointments. I think that, uh, kind of diminishes the job and the importance that Chief Laus has. You know, um, each, um, you know, each ladder truck costs a million, million dollars. Uh, you know, we can't buy a pumper truck for five hundred thousand dollars. You know, they're, they're now, you know, anywhere between five hundred and seven hundred fifty thousand dollars, I believe. You know, so there's a lot of, um, assets that he's responsible for. You know, hi, his, his responsibility is to, um, you know, make sure that, uh, that the department philosophy is, uh, you know, to his standard. You know, to his, you know, deputy chiefs and his battalion chiefs and his, uh, truck and engine officers. I mean, these, these, these are the, um, the men and women that are, are signaling, you know, to the firefighters, you know, whether to go into a building or whether to retreat. And, you know, they, they've got an extremely dangerous job, you know, let alone the fact that they've got to be trained, you know, to a very, very high standard. Because a lot of times they are the first EMS medical response, you know, for our citizens as well. So a little bit of jocularity here, almost, you know, late, late in the evening. You know, I, I think it's, 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 it's difficult at best to say, this one's real important, this one's not. This one's controversial, this one's not. Uh, they're all important. Um, you know, just like, you know, uh, you know, the, the custodian is just as important as the CEO. They're all important. And, and I, I don't, I don't want us to get into a class system where, where we try to designate which, which ones are more important than the others. And the other thing is, and I'll, I don't know any other delicate way to say it. Um, I, I don't, it almost is like we, um, we're trying to come up with, with a solution when there's really not a huge problem. Um, you know, the, the mayor, um, you know, by, by ordinance has the authority to, um, to make appointments. The council gives advice and consent, that's what we're doing now. Uh, there is staff, she interviews, um, you know, the prospective candidates. Other staff is, uh, is brought in for the interviews. They do the legwork, they pick the, the, the individuals. They bring it to council. We do get, um, a little briefing. Uh, sometimes a candidate comes, um, comes before us. But it's, you know, the mayor, um, by position makes the appointment. We advise and consent and that, that system's not broken. That's just like, you know, you referenced the federal government, that's exactly what happens. The president makes, makes the appointment and the senate, uh, holds some hearings and, and they either vote it up or vote it down. We, we take those votes, we, we voted up, we voted down. So, um, I, I get a little bit of a sense that we're trying to fix something that's not really that broken. Does it need some tweaks? Maybe, but not to the level that I think that you're trying to allude to.
You're all.
Um, so I'm, I'm going to agree and disagree with Bill. First of all, uh, I, I think this is an interesting conversation and I think some of the proposals that you have, Jared, are. an interesting conversation and I think some of the proposals that you have, Jared, are definitely worth considering. Number one, um, I agree, getting, getting appointments three days before they're supposed to be voted on is doesn't really allow for a lot of feedback from the community or at least allow any kind of investigation from uh, city council if we have some questions that we wanna raise. So I kinda wanna offer like a hybrid here. I think it would be good to have kind of an informational sheet at city, at committee of the whole um, saying these are the appointments that I'm planning to bring to city council so that people can be aware of the public and also city council. And then if we have questions, we can, we can forewarn the mayor and say, well, we have questions about these three people and, you know, we would like to be able to maybe pull them off. So you have like kind of the consent agenda, so to speak, and then you have the individual ones. Um, so I think that that is, is definitely worthwhile. Um, Bill, to your point about, you know, kind of advising consent, I think one of the roles that we play here is that we represent our wards. And if there are, um, and we represent the people of Urbana. And so if there are people within our wards who have concerns or questions about a certain appointment, I think that those are, that's where we come in. That's where we represent those people. Um, and I, I also agree with you, Bill, that to, to divvy up this group of people into, well, these are important positions or, or perhaps positions that deem city councils more involvement versus positions that are kind of administrative and we kinda go forth. I would like to not do that. I would much prefer to just have them as a bucket. Um, let city council and the public know, these are the appointments that are gonna be up on, in ten days, um, and if there's some kind of comments. Um, you, you know, the other thing, and, and I have some other ideas, but they're not fleshed out yet. So I'll definitely bring them back to city council, um, with some other ideas. But I think a good starting point is, um, to, to bring those to committee of the whole, not as a vote, just as an informational.
Dan?
I think it's important for people to understand how unusual it is in Urbana, the process that we follow in Urbana, particularly with staff appointments. Board and commission appointments is a whole other thing, but let's just start, start with staff appointments. Um, right now I appoint between twenty-two, twenty-three people. They're up annually. Many of these people are, they're all upper level, um, senior level employees. Most of them don't have contracts. It's unusual for somebody in the positions that many of our people are in to not even have a contract. So that's one thing we're expecting people to do is operate without a contract and then be up for an annual appointment year after year. I cannot tell you the stress and anxiety that that causes amongst staff each year for to be up for an annual appointment subject to that every single year with no security of a contract for people in their position. That makes an impact on our ability to retain and attract, um, qualified candidates. We have wonderful staff because they're, and they're willing to put up with this uncertainty, but it, you're asking a lot of candidates. And so now you're talking about dividing the question and separating people out and focusing on individuals like has happened in the past year. I've lost staff because of the focus and the targeted attacks on individual staff. And, um, this, this, um, this way we do things in Urbana is just really weird. I mean, it's, it's just, it doesn't make sense. So I were gonna make recommendations, you were gonna ask me how to change staff appointments. I would continue to reduce the number of people we subject to this process. And that's what we, you know, when I, when we, you know, Bill, a few people who've been on council for a while will remember, we used to have twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one people. We've gradually been moving people into civil service or moving them off of this, um, off of this process because we had mid-level managers subjected to these annual appointments. But, but you have to realize that how we do things in Urbana is just really unusual and it subjects people to a great deal of unnecessary anxiety. So before we start talking about a ten-day look at who's gonna be appointed and, and, um, uh, more examination, you've got to understand the impact on the people. And, and if you're gonna do this, uh, you know, what we need to do is just to get contracts for people. We need to go to a merit-based um, system. Right now we do raises based on longevity. That was put into practice years and years and years ago. That makes no sense. So we're moving to, we're doing a classification and compensation study right now in the city. We are going to and moving to a merit-based system of evaluation and, um, uh, raises, compensation for compensation. And, um, we ought to be looking at reducing the number of people we are subjecting to these annual appointments. And we need to give people contracts like every other professionals have in other cities. And boards and commissions, we've got about a hundred fifty seats to keep filled. And you noticed on B-PAC, that's eleven seats on that commission alone. Some commissions have nine members. Some commission have seven numbers. Um, it, I'm grateful we have people willing to serve as chairs for a number of years because it is just a non-stop job to keep these seats filled. And again, the last year has proven very difficult for people on certain commissions because they have been subjected to just relentless harassment and personal attacks. And, um, you know, you're, and you're talking about volunteers there. So, so I'd welcome assistance with keeping these, um, providing, uh, you know, getting members for, uh, to people to volunteer on boards and commissions, but that's a hundred fifty seats. And again, we're so used to the way things are in Urbana, we don't realize how, how off the charts we are. I was talking to a mayor from, uh, one thing about this last year, I've had a lot of conversations with mayors from other parts of the country and I was on a panel with one mayor from, I think it was Rockford where he, which is a city of, um, four times, but let's see, how, how big is Rockford? Hundred fifty thousand people, so four times the size of Urbana. And he was moaning about how he had a hundred twenty-five boards and commission seats to fill. That's a city four times our size with fewer board and commission members. I mean, we, we lock our boards and commissions. We get a lot of, you know, we have a lot of boards and commissions, but you don't realize how much work it is and how much time involved is involved in keeping those positions filled. So, so, um, but, but we have to talk about staff appointments, board and commission appointments. That's two completely different things. And our code is very vague. Our code is vague on whether or not those even have to be annual appointments. I don't think they should be. We should hire professionals. We should have annual evaluations on performance and, and they should have a contract.
And I'm, I, I'm not disagreeing with that, uh, by any means. Uh, I think there's, you know, I'm offering a given, a give and take. You know, I think that it is both worthwhile to offer people more security in their jobs, which is why I would be open to accepting, you know, longer terms of appointments for those appointments that are necessary. Uh, but at the same time, I think that there should be a more defined role for the advice and consent part of council's consideration of those appointments. I think asking to hear about them at the committee prior to a city council meeting is, is being, uh, being anything outrageous. You know, I'm, I'm not asking to, the council be involved in the hiring process. I'm just saying, can we get council some heads up? Can we clean up that language and let's talk about that process? You know, the advice, you know, you, Bill, to, Bill, over to your point, you know, about the senate holding its hearings, you know, that's what I'm looking for. Something akin to that, you know, process, which right now is just whatever discussion we happen to have at that city council meeting after we've seen the appointment list on Thursday, which maybe to me was enough. Uh, to me, it doesn't seem like there's enough there to really have a proper wall for that, the way that it's intended and how I read the state, uh, statute. But it's a decision process. This is what, you know, democracy is. I just think we need to bring it up, have discussions, try and clean it up and figure out what we're gonna do about it. Bill?
Yeah, to the senate, um, you know, they, they do the interviews. The senators don't do the, the interviews themselves personally. They usually have high-level staff do the interviews of the candidates. And then, um, you know, they do, do the, uh, the hearings. Like you just mentioned, we, we have something similar, but, you know, we're the city of Urbana, not the US Congress. You know, so, you know, it's scalable. You know, we, we have the opportunity to meet the candidates. We have an opportunity to, to ask them a question. We have an opportunity to the, to look at the, the, the documents that are provided. It's, uh, I think it's appropriate for the size of the city that we have. And although the federal government is somewhat of a model, you know, we're not scalable to that level. Uh, cause that, that's their full-time job. You know, I, you know, I've got a full-time job and I know you do, do, you know, you do too. So, you know, we've got stuff that we do during the day. We, we can't be personally, you know, running over to the city building, uh, sitting down and, and interviewing folks and, you know, kind of, uh, getting involved that way. So although the federal model is a model, it is, you know, it's, it's not everything they do is transferable to exactly what we should be doing.
Yeah, I'm not necessarily advocating, Bill, that we need to interview people or I'm not, I'm not saying that, you know, unless it's, you know, we interviewed, uh, Carol Mitten, you know, we all did two-by-twos with her. Uh, numerous times, I don't think, uh, you weren't, you were not counseling, you were doing that. Uh, but we met with her numerous times. We met with other candidates. I mean, it's not unheard of for us to actually talk to them at length prior to an appointment. And the problem with the process is the process, you know, and, and there can be a number of improvements. It could be something even as, even as simple as making appointments on the agenda, the, the first thing after public input. You know, whether or not the very last thing on the agenda, cause we had four appointments, one of, one of, uh, which was a police lieutenant. The other was city attorney. Those are important jobs. And we think I pushed to the end of the meeting and we tried to cram in an interview with those guys in the last fifteen minutes of that meeting. That was not enough time to talk to somebody to know whether or not, you know, you know enough about who they are to, to put them forward. I'm not looking, I'm not asking to do anything crazy here. I'm just saying, let's flesh this process out a little bit. So we've got some forewarning. We've got some time to submit some reasonable requests of candidates and we don't do them at the very end of meetings and they just get slammed through right, right, right at the very ends. Cause that, that to me does not even come close to offering advice and consent in, in our role in, um, that, that's all I'm getting at. I'm sorry. Going on very long. We haven't heard some other counselors. Other thoughts? Uh, Dennis and Eric?
Yeah, I think that we could, uh, have, I, I think that appointments of, should come to us as either a list or just for advice or, um, first as a, as to be looked at in the committee of the whole and then give us, uh, give us the week to, uh, make the decision and vote on them. You know, the other place I'd like to see more transparency? This is not on exactly, it's similar. It's a parallel track. And that is, I'd like to say have the city council members briefed on the progress of major contracts with employees, police, fire department and ASME. In the past, this council members have been brought into a closed meeting to be updated upon the progress of, uh, employment contracts and even discuss possible offers to be considered in the future with these, with the unions. And in my experience in the last three years, we haven't had any kind of interaction in a, in the process of making offers or reviewing the status of the police, fire or ASME contract negotiations. I think even though we may not be the ones who are negotiating, we really ought to be apprised of what the direction we're going and possibly the results that we might have to expect because it affects the budget rather significantly.
Well, actually you were, Dennis. We had closed sessions for the ASME contract and, um, you were briefed on the fire contract. And if you recall, we had a closed session at the B, before the police negotiation started. They've just been extremely, there's been weeks and weeks be, and weeks between, in the bargaining sessions at this point. But you were briefed on all three employee, uh, negotiations.
That, out of, uh, just respect for trying to stay on, on topic and keeping us moving along. Dennis, I do agree that those are important uh, points, but we probably ought to save it for discussion item, uh, at a.
That's fine.
Okay, uh, Eric, you had your hand up.
So I, I agree with the mayor that, uh, we probably should have contracts and not these, uh, yearly appointments. Um, anytime, you know, Urbana's a small city. Anytime that we're doing something radically different from most of the other cities, uh, we should question whether that is a wise choice. I understand we have, we're trying to be cutting edge in certain ways, but, but probably a lot of times things get done in a way that's, uh, sort of a, um, we're, end up with a legacy of, of, uh, his, uh, mistakes of history or happenstance of history and it might set us off on a bad course. Certainly if it's, uh, damaging our, you know, ability to attract and keep uh, people, that's, that's not good. And we certainly don't wanna cause undue stress. And you don't wanna create a situation where, you know, everyone gets a lifetime appointment and there's no, you know, incentive to do good work, but I, I think there's a lot of in-between there. So anyway, if it, it sounds like we could come to do something that's closer to, uh, uh, what is considered standard now or is most common among cities. However, I also think, uh, like Mary Alice and Jared and Dennis said, uh, that it would be very helpful to have the appointments when they do come up, come up in the committee of the whole and give us a week to look at it. It's really, anytime when we only have three days to look at something, it's very hard to, uh, to do a good job of it.
Thanks, Eric. Any other final thoughts? Not seeing any hands. Uh, we do have one more discussion item. Uh, the city of Urbana uses the criminal background checks. I know that we, uh, had gotten notification from Carol Mitten that we were gonna have. Uh, HR old staff wanted to, or HRC staff wanted to contribute to this conversation and it was proposed that we would move it, uh, to another meeting to allow for a joint meeting between the HRC and the city council to allow all of them, uh, to, uh, participate in that meeting. I would propose, uh, if folks were interested, you know, I, I do agree that there's probably gonna be some substantive discussion. Probably not enough for us to get done in twenty minutes tonight. And I really don't wanna kick this can down the road one more time because we've already done it three times now. But, uh, substantive discussion, I think is worth doing that. So what I would propose, uh, if it's agreeable to council and agreeable to the mayor of city staff, that rather than uh, trying to fit it in in the city council meeting, cause we can probably pretty much assure ourselves we're gonna be dedicating an hour to this conversation, I think. At least thirty, forty-five minutes. It seems to be hard for us to find time to fit it into a regular city council meeting. I would propose that prior to either the next city council meeting or the next, maybe the whole meeting, that we hold a special meeting. And we do that in conjunction with the HRC folks so we can, or it doesn't have to be that. It could be, you know, on Wednesday to where we've kind of done some of these other extended meetings on Wednesday evening. But I think a special meeting in conjunction with them would probably be the wisest, uh, path forward to allow ourselves the time to have a discussion and dedicate time to the topic. We're not trying to squeeze it in with our regular business and, uh, regular business. Appreciate thoughts on that. Yours?
Um, so, so my thought is if, if staff and, and the HRC is available next Monday at city council, we have everything on the consent agenda. And so I guess my question is, can we just, I mean, that, that would give us ample time as, as long as nothing moved off of the consent agenda during city council meeting to have that joint meeting. So that would be my question, I guess, to, to city staff and the mayor, if that would be a good compromise.
Yeah, I guess they might know what might be coming.
Sorry, I was having a little trouble with all my buttons here. Um, I think that would be fine. Um, I think, I, and I agree, uh, you know, there's a lot that we would like to cover because, you know, things that we've heard in, in public comment, it's clear that the public doesn't understand what we do. So this is a great opportunity to clarify and I'd like, I'd like not to be, um, cramming it in at the end. So, um, you know, we can figure out, uh, whether that should be a separate special meeting or in the context of a council meeting. You know, we, we can sort through those details.
Do you think next week, I mean, we have a lot of stuff we're expecting to add on to that city council meeting?
No.
Okay.
And if you keep, if you keep this as the major-only discussion item, you will allow time for it to be done. As you know, you added a couple of extra discussion items to this committee meeting. So if we commit to making the discussion of the use of criminal background checks as a discussion item for next week, then we should be able to get to it.
Maryelle?
If we do that, then I guess I would ask if we can amend the agenda to have the discussion item as the first item before the consent agenda. That way we know, it's like the first thing that we do after public input. I don't know if that would require an amendment to the agenda at the day, because we have a set rule in terms of the order, but I guess that's what I would propose.
Bill Corbett?
I don't see anything that we voted on tonight on the consent agenda as being controversial. I, you know, every single one of them was unanimous. I don't predict any of the items getting moved off the consent agenda and then us debating any one item. So I would be in favor of just keeping the order of the meeting the way it is. And it'll take, you know, 30 seconds to get through the consent agenda and vote.
Probably take more than 30 seconds to read all the resolutions. I get what you, I get what you mean. Yeah, and so long as we're not, as long as it comes after the consent agenda and before new business, I think that would be. That's agreeable to Carol and Diane, I think that's okay.
We can confirm at the cabinet meeting tomorrow, in terms of what new business looks like.
Okay, if there's a lot, I just, I think a special meeting would probably be best, so we can keep to our business during the regular meeting.
I think we can do this in the course of a regular meeting.
Okay. We're going to need a motion in a second to send those to that meeting.
Do we? Because it's a discussion item.
Well, it's not going to go anywhere on its own.
Mayor makes the agenda for the city council meeting. I don't know if we need a motion, there's nothing. I don't know if that's a question for the clerk or?
So, we need to make a motion to have it handed on there?
Well, it's already on this agenda. If you're wanting to send it on to City Council, all you have to do is make a motion to send it on to City Council.
All right, well, I will make that motion, that we send the background check discussion on to City Council at the next City Council meeting.
Bill, do we need to vote on that, or is that motion sufficient?
Since you all vote on everything that you send, whether it's one that would only require a voice vote, I would say go ahead and keep it in the same frame that you have it already.
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you.
Right, clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Sacks?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes. A motion passes and we will add discussion for criminal background checks through next week's City Council meeting. All right, last item on the agenda is council input in communications. Anybody have anything they would like? Not seeing any hands from anybody. All right, well, that will do it for us for this evening. Thank you all for your time, we will see you next week.